We are on. If everybody would like to be seated, we're going to start the meeting. So I'm going to let's approximately seven o'clock and I'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen September 1st, 2015. First order of business is review and approval of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 4th, August 11th, August 18th, 2015th as written.
I'll second it for discussion. I had just one minor change on the August 4th minutes.
Okay.
On number nine about the bonding. Second paragraph, it says board voted two to zero to one. It should be two to zero because I was recused.
Okay.
So we can just change that to two to zero.
Yep.
Then we're good.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Let's see. Okay. Item three is confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have September 15th to September 29th. Okay.
Do we have any dates that we're going to meet with the Warren Committee about our articles for the full town meeting?
We don't yet. We should though. Maybe I'll see if I can squeeze that in between there.
Okay.
I'm out of town for a week. I think the week of, which week am I out of town? I think it's the week of September 20th. So I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Okay. Item four is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item five, citizen speak. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board?
Actually, I wanted to make an announcement. Should I go over there or?
If somebody wants to address, yes. Nobody loves us today.
All right. So my name's Emily Martin. I live at Four Hope Ave. And I just wanted to make an announcement of a fundraiser 5K run that's going to be happening in Milton on September 12th. Beth Israel Deaconess Milton is presenting the Second Annual Dan Breen Memorial 5K Run Walk, which is, we call it the Red Shoe Run. And it celebrates the legacy of Dan Breen, who was a situate native. He was Beth Israel Deaconess Emergency Department Team member and a beloved friend to many. Last year's race, we had 225 runners and raised over $6,000. As a member of the emergency department, Dan was loved by all those around him. He defined the phrase "all-American" and was an avid rugby player for the South Shore anchors. His love for his family, friends, team members, and faith was embraced and appreciated by all who's met him. His enthusiasm and humor was irreplaceable and will never forget his god-awful red shoes that only he loved. So I believe it's a $30 entry fee. It starts at 10:00 a.m. at Cunningham Park. We're going to go the same route that the Milton Women's Club does for their 5K. It's a run or a walk and all the proceeds are going to go to a fund at Beth Israel that's going to fund emergency department furthering education for disaster preparedness and emergency management. So those are both areas that Hugh's interested in, so.
Fantastic.
That's great.
Anybody else? Seeing none, move to item six on the agenda, which is the public hearing on the 556 Adam Street Liquor License. And. Hi, Marion.
Good evening.
Marion.
I'm Marion McCetrick. I'm the attorney for the applicants for this liquor license. Sorry. Want to make sure I'm not too close. This is a liquor license for 556. Adam Street LLC.
You're securing in and out.
What, do I need it? I can also talk loud, so. Okay. So the applicant is 556 Adam Street LLC, which will be doing business as Novara. So the name of the new restaurant that's proposed for the Falcone property on Adam Street and Church Street is going to be Novara. And it will be a restaurant, as we discussed last winter, with Italian, fresh Italian cuisine. And I'm going to run through with the permission of the selectmen, some of the points that I've made in the cover letter for the ABCC liquor license application without providing every detail. I'm assuming that you'll ask me questions. And also, I have some updated information. But before I do that, there have been, there have been a couple of changes in regulations or in guidelines from ABCC. They also published a letter at the end of August with a little bit more information. And we've been working hard on this application. So we have made a few small changes in the text that the selectmen have. You have an electronic version of that in your files in your office, but I have copies of all of the changed pages. And I'm just going to take a minute to just hand those out to you. So if you just pass the copies down, there's one of each for each of you, there should be one as a file copy. Those are some changed pages in the main part of the application. There might be just one number. Added a check number to the first page, which is required by ABCC. So there are things like that. They're not big substantive changes to the application. This is additional financial information. It goes in addendum D, which is financial information about the financing of the restaurant.
Will I take it apart, Marion? It's okay.
There's a package. It's quite fat. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you can take that apart, but this goes, this is also financial information.
Okay.
And finally, ABCC is now asking to know the square footage of patio areas for restaurants. So we have revised our site plan, our interior plan, and added the square footage of the patio area. And I've revised a table I provided to the Board of Selectmen showing what the square footage is in the patio area. So I have five copies of that again, just for you to put in your paper application So the last time we appeared at a public hearing on this matter was when we had to appear before the planning board last winter for site plan approval. And then, at the same time, we were appearing before the Board of Appeals because the building to be used for this restaurant is a pre-existing non-conforming building in a business district and a special permit was required in order to change the building in any way. And we needed permission or approval of our parking plan from the Board of Appeals. So we have two decisions. One is site plan approval and the other one is a special permit and a variance from the Board of Appeals to approve parking and to approve the changes in the building. I did summarize the provisions. The selectmen have the whole permit in their file because it's part of the lease for this building. But just in case you're not interested in every detail, I did provide a list of the provisions for each permit. And a little bit later on, I'll go through that and I'll hand a copy out to everybody. So what I think is important to know, if you, whether you were or were not at the hearings last winter, is that the building plans really have not changed. The interior of the building will be completely renovated. This will be a one-floor restaurant. And the plan calls for an open kitchen at the back end of the restaurant, an entry at the front on Adam Street and another entry going out to the Church Street, out to Church Street where there's going to be a new 21-car-capacity parking lot, which will be for the use exclusively for this restaurant. This restaurant also has the use of the Falcone parking lot at Four Franklin Street, which has 39 spaces. And in our applications to the Board of Appeals and also in our discussions with the planning board, both of those parking lots were discussed as parking for the restaurant. So that although the Board of Appeals did not specifically recite a parking ratio, the planning board did, as we had presented in our materials, say that the parking ratio was going to be 2.5 to 1, which is a much lower parking ratio than for other restaurant applications thus far in Milton. But it takes into consideration the fact that East Milton Square is congested, has a lot of traffic, has a lot of competition for parking spaces. So there will be both of these parking lots available as off-street parking. The second thing that I can confirm tonight is that this new restaurant will be under the management of Vance Welch, whom you know as the person who formed and has developed Abbey Park Restaurant in East Milton. We talked about that last winter, but there was no agreement that had been signed yet. And it's quite important because we proposed but could not, you know, formally agree to a joint management plan for parking for both restaurants and for the use of valet parking, which has been required, if feasible and if it improves the traffic situation, by both the planning board and the Board of Appeals. So we now know that both restaurants will be under the management of, you know, will be working with Vance Welch as the, for overall management of both restaurants. There will be coordination of parking and there will be coordination of valet parking if that works out and the Traffic Commission approves a valet parking space, which the planning board has requested be located in front of the restaurant on Adam Street. So there are still some contingencies and things about valet parking that have to be approved by the Traffic Commission. I did speak with the Chief of Police, who has agreed to hold a meeting of the Traffic Commission in September now to consider that request for a valet parking space and in addition, to consider a request for a reserved truck delivery space on Adam Street so that large trucks will not be trying to deliver on the side streets and blocking the streets that face residential houses. So both of those requests are expected to be on the agenda of the Traffic Commission in September. And if you're interested in weighing in on that issue, you should, you know, look at the website and watch for the date. I think the town planner usually knows the date. I don't know the date of that meeting yet. So the second or third thing which has changed probably for the better from the standpoint of parking needs is that although this restaurant was approved with 160 seats, the interior design plan that we have for you today is for 132 seats. Again, last winter, the approval was for 20 outdoor courtyard seats. The current design plan calls for 16 outdoor courtyard seats. So there are fewer seats in the restaurant. The design, as shown in the preliminary plans last winter, has not really changed. There'll be a bar area. There'll be table seating. There's going to be a separate, very small, private dining room so that a very, you know, you could have a small party in the private dining room. So the, Novara intends to retain the brick walls, I believe, on the inside of the restaurant. And I can ask Vance Welch, with your permission, to get up in a little while and give you more detail. But in terms of the way the restaurant will look, the exterior on the front is not going to show at all because that has storefronts. The side will have new windows towards Church Street, but they will be not terribly large windows. The side facing another brick wall and another commercial building on the other side has a small, open area that's going to be the courtyard. And there will be three large glass doors opening onto that courtyard through which restaurant patrons can walk out into the courtyard where there will be 16 seats where both liquor and meals will be served. Liquor and meals will be served at all seats in this restaurant. There will be no area where you can just drink and not order a meal. There, I have a, an interior, let's see. Total number of seats is 132. There are 16 outside. There are 30 bar seats and the remaining seats are all at tables. So those are generally requirements or conditions when a, when a, when the selectmen, if they decide to issue a liquor license, they always issue it with a number of conditions. And some of them will relate to what types of seating will be provided and how many seats there will be at the bar. I reviewed the prior liquor licenses that have been issued by the town and I made a list of all the conditions and I, in some cases, slightly tailored them to this restaurant. So I'm going to sort of quickly go through those, just so you have some idea of what we are offering as conditions. The Board of Selectmen may also have other ideas about conditions. You always have to comply with and allow inspection of the restaurant by various public entities. The design layout is usually required to be consistent with the plan, which is the floor plan that I brought tonight and which I have taped to this chair. But anyone who would like to take a look at the floor plan is welcome to come up and just take one and spread it out. It's easier to see that way. Restaurant capacity has been approved by the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board at 160, but we're proposing a seating capacity of 132. And I think the occupancy, the, I believe it's a 221. The, it is on the plans that I've given you. That's what the building commissioner tells me is the occupancy limit for this space. So that's different from seating capacity. Hours of operation, as we're discussing last winter, are proposed to be 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, Sunday through Saturday. The last call for liquor service on the patio is, I think, 10:00 or 10:30, and I want Vance to correct that because I'm not positive that's correct, and 11:30 inside the restaurant. In general, there's a condition relating to noise and noise levels, that television sounds and other sounds have to be controlled and moderate and they shouldn't unreasonably disturb neighbors. There are always some conditions about refuse location and removal. And in the case of this application, we already have very detailed conditions in a site plan approval. And so what I did here for the selectmen was I referenced certain sections of the site plan approval and said that, you know, for example, sections three and four on the site plan refer to refuse location and removal. And that the details include showing where the dumpster can be located, what type of enclosure should be around it, in this case, it's supposed to be wooden, what type of cement base has to be under it, and that there has to be a spigot located next to it so that the enclosure can be cleaned. That's how detailed the site plan is. So I'm hoping that that will be helpful to the Board of Selectmen with those conditions, which also relate to a Wittler's license, which we're here tonight to discuss as well. There's always concern about grease storage and how grease is going to be removed. There are conditions in the site plan about that. Has to be a separate storage area. Grease has to be removed by a contractor on a regular basis. We submitted cut sheet specifications to the planning board for pollution control system. That's a ventilation system for the kitchen. It's a state-of-the-art, the very best equipment available at this time. And those are already in the planning board approval and are cited in the planning board approval. So should be, you know, should be hopefully adequate for the Board of Selectmen to use. The restaurant will secure, will install a security system. Will have the system monitored and investigated promptly, turned off promptly, and so forth. There's a condition that takeout service shall not exceed 3% of the total business of the restaurant. In other words, it will be a very, very minor part of the business. This is not a takeout restaurant. There will be no lottery in Keno. That's a state law requirement. And we're proposing that this will be a no-smoking restaurant completely. We do not want to designate a smoking area in the parking lot because we do not want patrons loitering in the parking lot and talking because we're afraid it will disturb neighbors. And we would prefer not to designate a smoking area in front of the restaurant, though if the Board of Selectmen require that we do so, we will do so. All signs have to comply with Planning Board and Board of Appeals decisions, Town and Milton bylaws. In addition, there are specific liquor license conditions. One of the most important ones probably, which is in other licenses in Milton, is that restaurant revenue from the sale of alcohol may not exceed 25% of the total annual restaurant revenue. The owner is required to provide financial statement at the time, statements at the time of annual renewal, showing that these guidelines are being followed. The hours of operation have to be consistent with the hours that I just recited for the common Wittler's license. Seating at the bar may not exceed 30 seats. And then there are, there is a long, detailed condition about employee training for liquor service, which I won't read to you, but I took this language from other liquor licenses that have been issued. So unless the board wants to change it, this is consistent with what they've done in the past. There will be no reduced or discounted prices for liquor, no happy hours, no two for the price of one. That's a state law requirement and it's intended to differentiate a restaurant from a bar. The management is supposed to be present at all times or designate a manager to be present at all times. The Board of Selectmen and the Chief of Police must be at all times kept informed of who is, who is managing the restaurant for purposes of a liquor license. No one entity is allowed to hold more than one liquor license. So this restaurant has its own LLC. It is a separate organization entirely from, for example, Abbey Park, although some of the same people are involved in investing in and designing this restaurant. And there are records requirements. And of course, failure to comply with conditions could be the occasion for revoking the license or holding a hearing before the Board of Selectmen. I did send a follow-up letter to the Board of Selectmen on August 28th because ABCC sent out a letter the day before indicating that they had made some, they wanted to provide some clarification to the requirements in their application. And for the most part, these, these requirements, these changes actually somewhat softened the information requirements. They don't really affect our application. We've already provided query releases and personal information forms for every restaurant investor. We've provided them for the manager, Vance Welch, and just as required in the ABCC application. It's now not required that investors who invest less than $50,000 submit those forms. And in our case, there are two investors and they're both, they're both investing more than that amount, which is described in the application. The main change that ABCC made through guidelines at the end of July is that they want more information about patio service. Not only do they want to know the area of the patio area, they want to know how many seats there are. They want to know that, that meals will be served with liquor so the patio doesn't become a bar area. And they have, and they want to be assured that the patio will not be overly intrusive or disturbing to neighbors. This patio area, this restaurant is in a commercial district. But one side faces a residential district. That's the side on Church Street. The patio area is on the other side of the restaurant. So it faces a large brick wall that belongs to a commercial building. The other consideration or concern that ABCC has is that they don't want the public wandering into the patio area or gaining access to it in any way. They want it controlled and they want the restaurant management to be able to see what's going on in the patio area or appoint a separate manager for that area. In this case, as I explained, the patio will be fully in view of the restaurant because there, you can see the doors, by the way, they're already installed. There are three huge glass doors that lead out to the patio. It basically almost makes a glass wall. So the interior management personnel will be able to see what's going on in the patio all the time. Furthermore, there will be a fence at, at the narrow ends of the patio area. So in front, there's about a, less than six-foot opening out to Adam Street. There will be a fence as well as landscaping there. It will not be possible to come in that way at all. At the rear, there will also be a fence, although there is, when you look at the plans, you'll see stairs going down into the patio. Those are for emergency access. And the fence will be gate, there will be a gate so that the public cannot get in, but it will be possible to get in for emergency access purposes. So we believe that we are in full compliance in our proposal with the concerns that ABCC has now expressed in its guidelines about patio service in restaurants. That doesn't cover everything that I've talked about. It doesn't cover everything that's in the application. But rather than just keep talking, I hope that the Board of Selectmen will have questions and maybe we can be more focused in what I provide as information. And Vance Welch is here. He's the, going to be the liquor license manager. He'd be happy to come up and speak if you would like to hear from him directly.
Okay. Sure, I'm sure he will. But before we start, I'll ask, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to ask the public first for comments? Do you want to ask our questions first and then open to the public?
I'm happy to have the public first.
Yeah, I'm happy to have them.
You'd like to have the public first?
They may have some of the same questions that we do.
Okay. So if you happen to open this up to the public now, if anybody has a question or a comment or would like to come forward, you can come up here, just state your name and we can go forward. Yes, sir. Oh, ma'am, I'm sorry. One of the microphones, yes.
No, she got one beside you.
Can you just state your name and address and?
Hi. My name's Suzanne Brown. I live at the corner of Church and Adams. I was not notified about the meeting. I'm less than 80 feet from this building. So I'm upset about that. My neighbors weren't notified. 20, 22 Church Street was notified. So there's a system problem within Town and Milton. Anyhow, question, who is getting the liquor license? Is it the Falcone people or is it the LLC and the investors?
You can answer that, Mary.
Okay. That's a good question. I should have made it clear. But the liquor license has to be granted to the actual restaurant, not to the owner of the property. And what I didn't mention, but which is part of the application requirement, is that the liquor, the restaurant must have a final lease from the owner before it can apply for a liquor license. So we do have a final lease from Falcone Properties, which grants the permission to use the property to 556 Adam Street LLC, doing business as Novara. And the lease is about 80 pages long. I have it right here. The selectmen have copies and you are welcome to go through it and see all the detailed provisions. But the liquor license then will be granted to the restaurant and the restaurant management is responsible for making sure that it follows all the provisions of the license. It also must come back every year in November and get the license renewed. And at that time, if there are, if you haven't heard about it before, the selectmen generally do hear if there are any problems that need to be addressed or if there's a major issue.
The liquor license is also not transferable from that location.
It is not transferable. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is not transferable.
Transferable to another person, but not to another location.
Same for location, okay.
Okay. Now, as far as the hours, I physically, my building abuts this dramatically with the parking lot. Abbey Park's hours are at 10:00 o'clock. Okay. 88 Wharf is 11:00 o'clock and Steele and Rye is 11:00 o'clock and 12:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. I'm asking for lower hours, you know, unless we're going to shut down that parking lot early. There's houses on every part of Church Street, whether they want to park in the Falcone parking lot, because the selectmen did grant Dunkin' Donuts the capacity to deliver at 3:00 o'clock in the morning. We have DPW doing street sweeping between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. I have a trash pickup between 4:15 and 5:45, excuse me, 5:15 and 5:45, which I've called the police, but there's no requirement, so they can't do anything. I need to sleep. Okay? And with people coming out, last call at 11:30, building shutting down at 12:30, employees coming out at, you know, excuse me, building shutting down at 12, employees coming out at 12:30, there's no time to be quiet where I live. And then I appreciate the non-smoking in the parking lot because it will be that parking lot because it's the closest parking lot. It's the big thing about, we need to sleep, you know? And we're not against the restaurant. They've done everything and Mr. Falcone's been nice. When I said there was issues, he's rectified them. I have no problem. As far as Vance, Vance I mentioned, but we need to sleep. There has to be some quiet time. And I wrote a letter when Dunkin' Donuts was getting the thing and it got granted. But I don't know what to do. You know, I've been there 50 years. It's not like I moved in here and I didn't know what was happening. It used to be a five and 10. It used to be Stella's. It used to be the shoe store. Okay? And I understand develops with time, but 12:00, I was expecting 10:00 because Abbey Park's 10:00. The square has to shut down at some point.
I believe it's 11:00 o'clock is?
Yeah. I did review the other liquor licenses and it is not 10:00 at every park. That doesn't mean that it doesn't get pretty quiet late at night. Generally, I've been told these restaurants are not busy.
I think it's 11:00.
That's what his license is. But if you look on his page right now, his hours of operation are 10:00. Right. That's what it says on the thing. But also, I have a question for you. As in the selectmen, I went through the whole process with Vance. You people make rules, but yet I need to know who's enforcing these rules. Okay? There's supposed to be two-drink minimum and then you have to have food. There's supposed to be receptacle for ashtray on Franklin Street, there's none. There's supposed to be- There's supposed to be where you're going to park, right on the website. And it doesn't get done, and that's fine, Vance has been a good person, don't get me wrong, but when you guys make these rules, they're going to have a direct impact on me now. And if you make it till 12, and we go late, and you know, then it's New Year's Eve, and we're going till 1, we have to live there. And you know, I understand you all live in Milton, but I'm 80 feet away. I think that's it. And then, who is part of the LLC? Is that available to the public?
Yes.
It is, and... It's in the application, but, and so I'm going to get out the application, maybe give it to you, and then maybe you can come back if you have questions.
No problem, and then, I have one more, sorry. Uh, no, that's, but, and the patio, you know, I understand Marion saying the patio technically abuts the brick wall, but my poor neighbor, who's been here since I've been growing up, it's going to directly affect her, because there is a house there. It doesn't, it abuts the parking lot, but she abuts the parking lot. And, you know, I understand Marion's doing everything 10 o'clock, but we're going to have some conscience as far as what we're going to do as far as sleeping. Okay, thanks, Marion.
Thank you.
May I just address one question about the patio? I didn't give you more detail about the design, although I did mention the gating and so forth, but there is now going to be a wooden fence, because we had an update here, a meeting with the planning board regarding the back of the building where the refrigerator is for the kitchen. The eight-foot, I think it's an eight-foot wooden fence, it's already being installed, goes from the Church Street edge of the parking lot in the back of the property, all the way over to the other Falcone Building parking lot. So the fence doesn't stop at the edge of the patio area, just because it faces a parking lot. It goes all the way back, which means that, I believe the neighbor, whom we've all been talking to, who is adjacent to the Church Street parking lot, directly adjacent, will now have a fence that's continuous and runs all the way across the back of this restaurant. That's just another way that both view of the restaurant and sound, any sound associated with the restaurant will be muted, and there is also landscaping. That's all been required by the site plan approval. And that, there was an existing wooden fence there on the back of the property, which the Falcones agreed to replace, and they are doing that work, because part of their responsibility as a landowner is to do the site work, including the fence work. So that is, that is an additional protection. The reason for the earlier last call for liquor services is so that noise will not be generated in the patio later on at night, and I'm happy to discuss and have Vance Welch come up and talk about hours. I'm sure the Board might want to talk about that some more.
Yep. We do have one additional question up there, sir.
I have a question, I'd like to speak.
Sure, if you'd like to, come up.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Tony McDonald, 4 Mechanic Street, East Milton, right at the corner of Adams, diagonally of this restaurant that's being proposed. Seems to me that a 30-seat bar is too big. This is not a restaurant, this is a bar room, for that amount of space there. Bar's too big. They've been promoting a restaurant there for a long time, telling us it's going to be a restaurant, a high-end restaurant. Why do we need 30 seats at a bar? That's number one. Number two is, my question is about the patio. Are you able, would somebody be able to go up to the bar and grab a drink and go out, walk out to the patio? Is that what this is, more of a gathering place? I know you said that you can order food out there, and so on and so forth, but can I, as a customer, walk in, go out to the patio, go to the bar, get a drink, walk to the patio, and sit out there for myself and have a drink? Can I do that? Or is it, I get seated out on the patio, and then I, there's no way I can go to that bar and get a drink, I have to be waited on?
If you, you want me to stop and just address that? I'm sure you have other questions, too. Okay, the way that, first of all, every seat in this restaurant, including bar seats, are seats where food must be served. So there is no area where someone can sit and drink. So although it's called a bar area, the reason it's called a bar area is, yes, it's around the area where there's a service for liquor, and those seats are fixed seats, so they'll always be there, and they're in a circle. You see sort of the same design, I guess, in Abbey Park, you see it in a lot of restaurants. The rest of the seats are all tables and chairs, and they can be moved around in different configurations. But food must be served, and I believe the state, that state law requires this, but even if it doesn't, the Selectmen, I believe, have put it in licenses, that you cannot serve more than two drinks without ordering food. In other words, so if you're waiting to be seated at a table seat, and you're at the bar, you can't just keep ordering drinks, and you can't stay there and order drinks. No, you can't just, you can't get a drink at the bar and take it out to the patio area. It is a restaurant, a restaurant seating area, and food will be served to patrons out there. You have to sit down and place your order there.
So you must be seated by a hostess.
You must be seated by a hostess. And this is, this is an important concern, and this is why ABCC has finally begun looking at patio areas in restaurants, and it is indeed something that could be, you know, a problem if it's not properly regulated. So those are the, those are the conditions that we understand that we would have, that this restaurant would have to operate under. I think the Selectmen may want to put some conditional language in the liquor license, because it's a new thing, reflecting the description that I provided, or whatever you think is important in that regard.
The other thing, you mentioned that there's going to be a separate room for a function room, or a small gathering, or what have you. Again, the question is, is that, do we remove all the tables and chairs, and we, you know, go up to the bar and get our drinks, and, you know, and just start dancing on the floor there?
It's a really small room. It has eight seats. So it's not, I know, it sounds like more than it is, and I shouldn't have called it a...
Take out the eight seats, and move them away somewhere, and we walk up to the bar and get our drinks up there. Well, my main concern is that, and I'll put it in a nutshell to you, my main concern is that the waitress, if you're sitting in a seat, whether it be on the patio in that function room, or you're being waited on by somebody, you're not moving around here having drinks. If you're not in a seat, you can't get served. Standing room at the bar, 30-seat bar, is, I think it's too big. It's much too big if you want this to be a restaurant. It would seem to me that if you were gearing more towards the restaurant end of it, which I've been hearing for a long time, that you wouldn't need that. 30-seat bar is, that's a good-sized bar.
How big is Abbey Park's bar?
Well, I'd like to ask Vance to address that, but I also want to say that I asked the same question when I saw the restaurant plan, because I understand the primary concern is that you create a restaurant and not a bar. And one of the answers I received, both from the designer and from Vance Welch, is that people today really like to sit at a bar and eat. And the reason, and they, you know, they can order a drink, of course, but it seems to be more, you know, the family group or the group of friends wants to sit at a table, but when you come in as a single person, and this isn't just for singles, it's also couples, they like sitting at a bar, and that's why restaurants are featuring their bars as nice places to sit. They're not just a place where you go and wait to be seated at a table. So that was the explanation I was given. I think Vance might want to address it also.
Well, I think I can, I think I can actually answer that question to you, because I am obviously a person that likes to go to restaurants. When you have quinoa, people like to sit at the bar, because they can get their quinoa in quicker, so they can eat at the bar and get their quinoa in quicker, they're watching the screen. That's why people like to sit at a bar and eat. Now, a upper-scale restaurant, and this is what you're proposing, and this is what you've been selling, no, they don't want to sit at a bar, they want to sit at the table. You're on a higher end, you told me. They're going to, that person doesn't want to go sit at a bar, you know? You're not having quinoa there. We don't need a 30-seat bar there, would seem to me, if it was a high-end restaurant. So you're saying one thing, you're doing another, I see it all over the place. Again, I agree with my neighbor, I'd like to see it 10 o'clock. Done, you know? I mean, that parking lot, comes out Church Street, neighbors all around there. We're not against the restaurant, we're not. It's probably not the best fix for that, that spot, you know, but, I mean, we were sold that it was a high-end restaurant. I don't know of anybody that's on the high end that likes to sit at a bar. I think there, you know, it's parties of four, parties of three, in high-end restaurants. I think the 30-seat bar could be cut back tremendously. And the hours of operation should be 10 o'clock, done, done as far as serving alcohol. I thank the Board for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess that's it at this point. If Vance would like to come up and answer those couple of questions, or in terms of the, I mean, I'm familiar with Abbey Park's, how you doing Vance?
Right.
Obviously with Abbey Park's bar, and Steel and Rye's bar, they're both pretty good-sized bars, I don't know the exact seating capacity, but...
Abbey Park has 25 seats.
Okay.
So it's not much, it's a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
The trend is that people do like to sit at the bar, and it's to accommodate that primarily. Most, I mean, a lot of diners, especially couples and singles, have dinner there. It's very common for us to serve, you know, $30 entrees at our bar. It's, and there's, you know, oftentimes, the bar will be full with diners, and the dining room will, you know, will, people will wait for bar seats rather than sit in the dining room. It's just a personal preference. So, I mean, that's...
Vance, I do want to commend you. A couple of years ago when you opened, I brought a couple of friends from, in Boston, down to Abbey Park, and they used to go into some high-end restaurants in the South End, and also Se Strega, and we sat down, had two drinks, and they came over and said, "You got to eat if you want to have another drink." And so it was enforced, and I thought, I thought it was, you know, a good thing, and my friends said, "Jeez, that's unbelievable, I hadn't heard of that before." So, so to your credit, it had been enforced, and I think it's a good, it's a really good policy.
We have great food.
Now, is, with respect to the two drinks and then food, is there a definition of food is? Does it have to be an appetizer? Does it have to be?
Well, I've always referred to it as meal service.
Does it have to be something more than just a bag of nuts, I guess, is the question?
Well, we don't serve nuts, so.
High-end appetizers, right?
The trouble is that meals can be quite variable, as you know. I often actually order, I don't order the main entree, because I like smaller portions, so sometimes I'll order something that's defined as an appetizer.
That's why they call them small plates now.
So it's a little difficult, but small meals or some form of a meal depends on how narrowly you want to define it. You could probably put some more language in there that would make that clear, that it isn't just a bag of nuts.
Can we talk about the hours, Vance? Maybe you could speak to that. What is Abbey Park's current practice?
Our liquor license allows us to stay open till midnight. Our, you know, kitchen, our full menu closes at 10 o'clock, that's pretty much when the, when the restaurant winds down. We do, you know, we do offer lighter fare until we close, and that's, but that's, you know, pretty much the way that the other restaurants in town run. I think everybody has a 12 o'clock liquor license, whether or not they keep their restaurant open is kind of, I guess it depends on the season and the time of year, but it's, I think it's important to have the ability to stay open, to compete with the surrounding towns and business, and other restaurants, to have the same type of license and ability to operate. I think that Abbey Park, you know, we've proven, you know, that it really hasn't been a problem with the way we operate. We're going to, we're obviously the same operators running Novara, and we don't expect any of that, you know, anything to be different, other than the food itself, and, you know, it's quite a bit different as far as the aesthetics of the building, and it's going to offer a lot, just some variety for diners to come, that want to come to the square and eat.
Couple of questions.
Just a follow-up on that, just looking at the license for Abbey Park, it looks like it's 5:30 to 11 for dinner Sunday through Wednesday, and 5:30 to midnight Thursday through Saturday. So in the Abbey Park one, there's a difference for the weekends versus the week, the early weeknights.
Steel and Rye, thank you.
Steel and Rye is midnight until 12 every night, although terrorists and patio seating ends at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I think we're kind of following that model.
But food service stops at 10 o'clock in terms of a dinner?
Yeah, dinner menu.
Okay, and will be the same at Novara?
Yep.
Okay.
I think it's a one-hour difference earlier in the week versus...
And then you continue serving lighter fare, though, if you were serving alcohol?
Yeah.
I think what Vance is saying is he keep, even though he has the ability to stay open for dinner service later, dinner service stops at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, it usually, it's just between, after 10 o'clock, once, once the orders are in, we just have to give people time to eat. And then, you know, that's usually just a, you know, it's just to allow enough time for, you know, anybody that wants to order that late to, you know, finish their meal.
Got a question related to neighborhood impact on deliveries, and will it, a couple of things. Number one, neighbors have complained in the past about large trucks going through, there are stop signs that aren't adhered to, you know, it's, a lot of kids, especially. What times are typical deliveries, and what do you, like, what do you foresee?
You know, there's, you know, it's, there's a lot of different businesses in the square that require deliveries.
Sure.
It's not just the restaurants, you know, the delivery, a lot of the vendors that we do use are small independent companies that don't have big trucks. We do have a big truck delivery once a week to each restaurant, that's, that's normal. But so does Stella's and everybody else. I mean, regardless of the size, those big companies have big trucks, and if they're part of the route, they come in. You know, usually our deliveries are in the middle morning. I mean, we don't have any late-night, 3:00 a.m. deliveries, we're not there. We're not there at 6:00 a.m., so we, usually our deliveries come in, you know, before lunch. We try to get, we try to direct our vendors to come around our meal periods.
That's great. No, I think it's important just for people to hear, because it would be an impact, had it be early morning, especially when kids are going to school, or late at night when people are trying to go to sleep, so I appreciate that you guys are...
We're not awake yet.
Right, there you go.
If I read correctly, too, the, the small trucks can use the parking lot behind the restaurant, but the large trucks designated delivery?
Yeah, large trucks would go on Adam Street.
So no large trucks would be coming down Church Street?
It states in the site plan approval, just what you just said, small trucks only, use Church Street, large trucks have to be on Adam Street. And also, the vendor shall be encouraged to make deliveries at mid-morning, no peak traffic times. You know, as you say, vendors come, they're delivering to a lot of different places, it's difficult to say every vendor has, I mean, every delivery has to be at 10 a.m. But it's right in the site plan approval that reasonable efforts will be made to have vendors deliver at those times, rather than during the peak traffic times, and the times that are more likely to disturb neighbors, which are early, you know, early morning hours, certainly evening hours, and clog up traffic. So that, we had some considerable discussion about that, and that was what was agreed upon as a condition, and it's a fairly strict condition, actually.
Okay. And I'll get to you in a second, sir. Right now, Abbey Park, you have the, you have use of the parking lot behind the Falcone Building, which is basically abuts a residential neighborhood, similar to what the parking lot at Novara will. Pretty much, I mean, it's right next to Franklin Street, this one's right next to Church Street. Have you had any complaints from neighbors in the Franklin Street area with respect to...
Not that are directed at the restaurant, I mean, I haven't heard of any. No, it's pretty, we haven't had any incidents to report in the entire time we've been there.
Okay. I suppose typically, I mean, I'm familiar with Steel and Rye... I suppose typically, I mean, I'm familiar with Steel and Rice. If you get there, you know, late at night, you know, 10, 10:30, there's hardly anybody left in the restaurant. It's pretty much cleared out.
Same here.
At least Monday through Friday, maybe a little more on the weekends, but similar.
It's, it's just similar. You know, you know, we're busy during the main dinner hours and it quiets down pretty much, especially during the week.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's a, you know, it's, it's the same typical flow of any, any restaurant, especially in the, in our area. You know, we all have the same pretty much business patterns.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, I think the gentleman down here.
Just a quick question, question, well, it's not a question, it's a comment. They had agreed to move that bus stop at the corner of Adams and Mechanic Street there. And it's, you know, you mentioned in these big trucks on Adam Street. And that was one of the issues that came up because when the bus stops where it is now, it's right after the light and nobody can get through the light because they can't get around the bus. So now, if we have a delivery on Adam Street, which I believe that that's where it should be rather than disturbing the neighbors on Church Street and what have you, or in Franklin Street with the big trucks, then it has to go on Adam Street. The bus stop has to be moved. They said that they had put it in an agreement that it would be moved. It hasn't been moved yet. It should never have been there to begin with because all it does is mess up that traffic there because you can't get around it. There is a bus stop up the next block. It's only a short little block up. The street is much wider. Adam Street gets wider.
Hmm.
When the bus pulls over to the curb, car can get by it. So I think that that really needs to be done, you know, before we start getting, you know, Budweiser down there delivering the beers.
That's a good point.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Policing of the parking lot on Church Street. If they're opening at 11:30 and they're using that parking lot for 21 spaces, how do I know five ladies haven't gone to Bella Visage and gotten their nails done? And there's five less parking spots?
I mean, I guess you don't really, but...
Well, I, I can, using the Falcone lot as a, as a model, I would say it is possible to police who's parking in the parking lot. And they do. And that it would be, the onus would be upon the restaurant to police its parking lot because they need that parking. So it's a good question and I think the management of the restaurant should be held to a standard of enforcing the fact that it's restaurant-only parking. There would have to be appropriate signs stating that. I do know some actual enforcement and sometimes having somebody watching the parking lot is what Falcones have done with their lot. I don't know if Vance would like to address that question now because, you know, he's not the owner of the Falcone lot, but in this case, the restaurant will be managing the lot right along with the restaurant.
No, correct. But if you're allotting 60 spaces, Mr. Falcone's, you know, he has a guide and the guide, you know, if you're using his building, that's it. But the guide goes home at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock. So now you're using the back of the Falcone's lot as their parking and on Church Street. How do we know that those spots are gonna be designated? Otherwise, I'm gonna have overflow on Church Street, overflow on Adam Street, and it's gonna really severely impact the neighbors, which is fine. I don't know if they're putting gates, if they're putting someone, but technically, nobody should be parking there until 11:30 if that's when the restaurant's opening. So, that's fine. And then the second one is supposedly, there's rumors out there that they were originally going to move the bus stop and there was talk to put the valet in front of my house, which I will, I'm just telling you, I'm totally against it. Where is the valet going?
I did ask, may I answer?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I also wanted to know, first of all, whether the Traffic Commission had voted to recommend a valet parking space yet. And my, and the chief responded, "They have not." So they will be holding a meeting, a public meeting, their meetings are always public, in September to discuss where and if there should be valet parking space, a valet or two valet parking spaces provided on Adam Street. So it's a good question. And if you think there's a good reason not to locate it where you've just mentioned, then I recommend, it should not be there in your opinion, then I recommend that you make sure that you, you let the police chief know and why. Because I haven't heard any such proposal. I haven't been privy to any such discussions. I thought the selectmen might have had some, but my, it hasn't happened and no decision has been made. In fact, there isn't even a recommended, recommendation yet from the Traffic Commission saying they support putting a valet parking space on Adam Street. We hope that they will recommend that because we think it might help with traffic management. But it should be conditioned on it, it being helpful. So if valet parking or valet parking space makes the situation worse, then it shouldn't be continued. So, you know, that's the premise behind the, the site plan approval and the Board of Appeals' approvals. They both spoke about valet parking in a positive way, but they both said the purpose of this is to create better control over traffic flow and where people park. So I think that is a question that should be addressed before the Traffic Commission. I will remember what you said, but I, I recommend that you send a letter directly to the selectmen of the Traffic Commission saying that you do not want a valet space in front of your own house on Adam Street.
I don't think, I don't think legally you can. I'm in residential zone to put a valet in front of my house.
That wouldn't make any sense anyways if you're gonna put valet parking on the restaurant.
Well, there's talk of to move it and then...
I haven't heard anything about...
Okay.
...that location.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
And then who, I understand the Traffic Commission would make up this question of whether you could have valet or not. Steel and Rice starts their valet at 6:30 at night. Would the selectmen make the time or is it the Traffic Commission that would make the time as far as when the valet could start?
I think it's the owner of the restaurant to decide. I mean, because obviously you want the valet at, at peak hours when, you know...
No, I was surprised it started so late.
Well, usually a restaurant is not that crowded at 5:00. You know, really, the crowd doesn't really start until around 6:00. Steel and Rice is a little unusual and it, it does start sometimes early, but, but usually if you get Steel and Rice at 5:00, there's, you can find a parking space in the front.
They're valeting at that time because the closest spots are gone and, and that's probable.
Well, the closest spots start on Church Street too, you know?
Right.
But the, the Traffic Commission would make a recommendation of this.
They'd make a recommendation.
We don't formally approve, but there would have to be some input. There'd be a hearing before the Traffic Commission discussed this.
Restaurant owners can make a proposal and say they would like to be able to provide valet parking during certain times. But the Traffic Commission's gonna hear that proposal, they're gonna have some opinions about that, and then they don't vote it either. It's the Board of the Selectmen that has to approve that recommendation.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Was the Traffic Commission the final stop or was it...
Right. But, but it will be, that, that approval will not be always necessarily, but just valet parking where it is and, and that would be...
Okay. And then Mr. Falcone and Vance have been wonderful and this is only hypothetical, but just say all of a sudden you have the 21 spots on Church Street that have been allowed by the Planning Board and the Appeals Board, and all of a sudden we have Church Street backing up and it's 25 minutes getting out. Who, who is responsible for revisiting this? Is it, do I have to go back to the Traffic Commission? Do I have to come back to you? Do I have to go? Where do I go? If that's the case. And there is, there is a camera there now.
If, if traffic does back up similar to what, you know, Steel and Rice, I mean, that's one of the reasons Steel and Rice did put their valet parking in was because it's clearly, it, it alleviates some of that congestion. You don't have people circling around looking for parking spaces. And, and that has helped quite a bit up at Steel and Rice. No, it has. I mean, they still get, you know, that's a very tidy area and very few parking spaces up there. But it, the valet does help. But we would hear about it if there was traffic and...
Well, on a good day, there's, on a Friday, there's six, seven car backup right on Church Street waiting for that light. And sometimes they block the box and the cops can only do so much. And I get it, there's only so many police, but, you know, I have to get out of my driveway. My neighbors have to get out of their driveway and now we have people or valet trying to get into the parking lot. So I'm, this is just a foreseen thing. It may not happen, may happen, but is it something I come back to the selectmen, Traffic Commission? Who do I address if that happens?
Yeah, it can be addressed to the selectmen.
Oh, no, I'll go to the...
The Traffic Commission? I mean, you can always address the selectmen with it, with, with an issue. We don't, if we're not already aware of it, you can make us aware of it and we'll certainly do our best to make sure that, I mean, the Traffic Commission deals with traffic patterns. Typically, what we do if we have a complaint was make sure that it got on the next Traffic Commission agenda and dealt with.
If you, if you issue a permit or a license, liquor license or Wittler's license, with any language about valet parking or traffic management or you, or even, and you will, I know, reference the permits that have already been issued, then at the annual liquor license renewal, if not at other times, there is always gonna be the opportunity to come back and say, "There's a certain part of this plan that isn't working and this is what it is." And you would request the change, at least at the end of November, if not at some other time. So one thing about a liquor license, it's different from a lot of these other permits from the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, is it has to be renewed every year.
Right.
And there is an opportunity to air whatever problems may have arisen or, you know, which you've, you've experienced. Once the restaurant's in operation for a year, you'll have a, you know, we'll all understand better what some of these issues might be. The proposal for valet parking is intended to improve the flow of traffic, keep it away from the areas that are causing a problem. If that's the Church Street parking lot, then it should be directing more people to park, you know, taking more cars to, to the other lot on Franklin Street. Sometimes it's a little hard to anticipate how those problems are gonna arise until you actually see the operation. And it, so, but you need to keep in mind that with a liquor license, you have that opportunity every November. And it, it's a pretty high bar for a restaurant in addition to all the financial requirements and the liquor service requirements, you know, restaurant, not a bar, all of those things. You, you also have other operational, and the Wittler's license is granted every year too. Both of those have to be renewed every November. All these conditions we're talking about relate to those two licenses as well as to the original site plan approval and the Board of Appeals' approval. So you don't necessarily have to go to the, you know, building inspector to make a complaint if you think, if you can see that what you're talking about has been tied into the liquor license. And that's the job of figuring out what conditions appropriately should be placed on a liquor license and on the Wittler's license.
Right.
When is the restaurant supposed to open?
Well, we have a proposed opening date of December 1st.
So I'd have to wait 11 months for the renewal of licenses?
Yes, but you can always go back to the selectmen in the interim to say that there's a problem. I mean, you can do that anyway. My point is, unlike other, other permits, you have an annual opportunity.
I'd go to Vance's bar prior to, but then if it, if it continues, it's, you know...
But it becomes a serious problem if it's a liquor license issue because if they can't get their liquor license renewed, the restaurant won't be able to continue. So it needs to be addressed at least at that time, if not before.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I had another question. Marion or Vance, would there be any live entertainment being offered at the restaurant? The reason I ask is that's not, there's no prohibition on that included in this draft of the conditions, but the Abbey Park license says no live entertainment of any type. So are you proposing to do that here at this restaurant?
We don't have a proposal at this time. I think Abbey Park does have an, an entertainment, they now have a license to provide some live entertainment. I don't know what, what form that takes. Vance can enlighten you about that. That would be something that was granted later.
Okay.
And we are not, there is no such proposal before you now for this restaurant?
There was something in the language here.
If there were going to be one, it's my understanding that we would, that this restaurant would have to come back in and receive a permit for that. You can't, it's not permitted as part of a regular restaurant liquor license.
There was something that talked about entertainment though, as I read through the, basically saying that...
It's number five in the, in the draft of the...
Yeah, that the noise would be quiet.
Yeah, those are conditions on ambient noise, noise that's generated because these restaurants do have TVs and things like that.
Okay, maybe that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
There's some electronic noise. And, you know, if it were, I can't imagine it would be pleasant for restaurant patrons if it were too loud, but nevertheless, that condition's in there if it's being heard by neighbors and bothering them.
Okay.
Yeah, both of them, the, well, actually all, the, the two that are in place that we've got as samples and the draft of the conditions for the...
Oh, sorry. It says noise, music, entertainment. Yeah.
Yes. But, but there is a reference to no live entertainment in the Abbey Park license, but it sounds as though a separate license was granted subsequent to this license in 2008?
I don't...
Is that the case Vance?
Yes.
Maybe we don't have complete paperwork.
This would have been after the restaurant opened and had been in operation for a while. He would have come back in and requested permission to have some singer come in sometimes. I don't know what you do for live entertainment, but why don't you come up and just explain it? We're not asking for that for this restaurant.
Okay.
I mean, it, once a restaurant's in operation, if it looks as though there's something that might be nice to do, that everyone would like, that we don't, you know, you don't think would be intrusive, you, we could come back to the Board of Selectmen and, and ask for permission for some sort of live entertainment. But, you know, that's not the plan now and if, if that's, looks like it's a good idea and it's supported, then at a later date, the restaurant management might come back in and ask for it.
We did, we did subsequently apply for a entertainment license. We use it for, we do a jazz brunch occasionally. It's not a regular thing. We did it, we did it in July. We did it for three Sundays. Occasionally, we'll, we'll do a wedding or something like that at that restaurant and they can bring in a small, we don't, it's not really, and we don't have a entertainment venue in either restaurant, so, but there's certain times where it's appropriate that we've been allowed to do it.
Okay. Thank you. David McHale's?
My concerns are basically about the neighborhood and the, any impact, but you've answered those questions, so thank you.
Okay. Just looking through what other questions. I am, and maybe I'm just reading the, the site plan wrong, which wouldn't be the first time. Get back to it. It looks like if you look at the site plan that was submitted to us, if you look at the, the parking lot area, it says in that parking lot area, something about valet parking, loading zone.
Are you talking about the interior design plan or the site plan from the planning board?
The site plan, apparently from the planning board. It was included in our package.
Well, whether a loading zone for valet parking, well, we went back and forth at those hearings. First, we proposed that it be a church, that if there were valet parking, that the pickup and, you know, drop-off would be Church Street. But then neighbors said, you know, "We really don't want that. We don't want the additional valet parking traffic."
Okay.
So why not put it on Adam Street?
Okay.
So it's quite that it's to be on Adam Street. It's a specific condition. So if it is on the site plan in that form, maybe that was the original engineer's, you know, note, but I, I believe the language of the site plan approval with the conditions would control and it is very clear that that was not the final decision.
Okay, that's fine. And let's see, the other, the only other, let's see, I already asked about what constitutes food, so I guess, yeah, we would like that, just clarify it a little bit, just so we'll know. And then the only other thing, and it's been a sticking point of mine in all these applications, A, because we don't really look at it on an annual basis and we should, but the, the 25% of total revenue being from liquor, you know, as a percentage of total revenue, my of total revenue being from liquor, you know, as a percentage of total revenue, my suggestion, rather than having a reviewed financial statement, which really has no, no guidelines as to how you certify that 25%, there is, in the accounting standards, what's called an attestation engagement, where basically the owner makes an assertion that 25% of his total sales are from, or less are from alcohol, and the accountant basically asserts to that. And writes a, you know, either a review or an audit of that assertion, and it's called an attestation engagement. So, I would prefer that as opposed, and it's probably cheaper than the review, because that's the only thing you're looking at, is that one element. That's all I want answered, you know, I don't need the whole financial statement. And it's, you know, it's common, so.
So, that goes to point number one, Tom, in the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you would, the Board of Selectmen would like to add some additional language explaining what type of form of report you would require.
Yes, yeah.
And in those terms that you described. I mean, you're a CPA and I'm not, so if you're telling me that that's a simpler and more direct way to provide the information that's required anyway, then, you know, and obviously you have a concern with that.
Right. But the only thing we want to answer is that one question, then we don't need a whole financial statement. We just need the CPA to answer, or to attest to that one question.
So, this would be in the annual review, and any restaurant would be on notice, basically, that they need to prepare that statement before the end of November.
Yes.
Every year.
Correct.
So, is that manageable?
It is.
Okay.
One other question, Marion, just a point of information. Where is the mezzanine level? Is that at the back of the building, near the kitchen, or is that near the front of the building?
It's above the kitchen.
Above the kitchen.
This room has very high ceilings, and for most of the restaurant, it's just going to be an open, high ceiling, but in the back, they've created a mezzanine so that they can have some storage, won't be used for anything else. And it's not for liquor storage, but just sort of miscellaneous storage.
Okay.
And Vance, I guess just to put some of the, you know, somebody said this is a bar. Could you give us an idea, and I know the menu probably hasn't been set yet, but of, you know, what this menu might be like?
Well, it's going to be, it's-
Italian, obviously.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty rustic Italian, and, you know, a lot of our culinary talent has Italian roots. It's, you know, we're going to have a brick oven in there to, you know, that, we're going to have a pizza product that's going to be, you know, a scaled-up pizza product that's, which in a lot of pasta dishes, true to, you know, regional Italian cuisine.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's something our chef is working on. Tony Durenzo, he's, his family's all from Italy, so that's, he's taken most of his mother's recipes.
A lot of veal dishes and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of standards, a lot of, a lot of contemporary spins on old standards. That's pretty much Tony's style.
Okay. Tom, I have a process question. So, are you proposing we close the public hearing tonight, and then we have deliberations on the conditions? And what's the, I know there's a certain time in which we need to make a decision and then submit it to the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission. Maybe you may know that, or maybe Marion is familiar with the timing and-
If you are, Marion.
Yeah, you have, after you, after you have the hearing, so if you, after you close the public hearing, you have a limit of 30 days during which you must make the decision, up or down, whatever, and you want to decide with the conditions. Once you have voted your decision as a final decision, or if you vote, if you were to vote tonight, a decision but conditional on certain information being provided, or something like that, once you make a final decision, within three days, you have to send the whole thing into ABCC. So, you have to be ready to get that into ABCC.
An entire agreement about the license.
Yes. And your Barbara Martin has been working very hard. She's really, I want to say thank you, although she's not here tonight, to her, because she's kind of been working and trying to help me go through this liquor license process and understand it in detail. And she has brought to my attention what those time limits are as well, so she's paying attention to it. So, no, if there's information that you still need, but you know what it is, you could close the hearing. If you wanted to deliberate tonight, you could, but you, and you could make a decision, but you could say, but the decision will not be final until we have X, Y, and Z. And then upon receiving those pieces of information, the decision would become final. So, at that date, you have three days to send it into the ABCC. If you don't want to decide tonight, you want to deliberate at a future meeting, then from the time you close the hearing, if you close it tonight, you'll have 30 days to make a decision. That's my understanding of the regulations.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the real question is, do we need, within three days of making that decision, do we need an actual agreement, or just the?
When you say agreement, do you mean the conditions?
Well, I guess the license itself. We will issue a license with conditions.
So, we've, it's really the conditions that we need to determine.
Yeah.
And we have a proposal from Marion that she's gone through with us, but we may want to make some, as she said, some of them address hours, the issue about the entertainment, the smoking areas, so there's probably some changes that we need to make to this-
Well, that's a good point.
To this draft. And I've, others may, I've got a couple of minor changes that I think we should make, and both of you may have others as well. So, in terms of the process, do you, how will you propose that we do this? I know we have a full agenda. We've got a lot of people here for other items. Should we, are we going to have that discussion tonight, or are we?
I would say let's, let's close the hearing tonight and then have a discussion at our next meeting. We can do that, correct?
I believe we can.
We have 30 days.
Yes.
You'll have 30 days, so-
If we close the hearing.
You're going to meet within 30 days?
So, I guess the only reason I wouldn't close the hearing is if we had additional information that we, I mean, the only additional information, I guess, that I can think of is the valet parking, but we won't know that until Traffic Commission makes a recommendation. I did have the smoking thing. My only concern, you know, I'm not a smoker, so great, you know, it's nice to hear it's not, you know, you won't be smoking in the parking lots, or, but my fear is, if you don't allow smoking anyplace, then people are going to smoke anyways, they're going to go someplace. And if that someplace is in front of somebody else's store, that isn't quite fair either. So, how do we regulate that?
There is a, yes. Well, I don't know. This was a discussion that I had with the restaurant management, and recognizing that that could be an issue. There is a smoking area, designated smoking area, in front of Abbey Park. Is that right? Is it in front?
I don't know if it's designated, but they're, you know-
I think it was in your permit. I mean, I think I remember seeing it, but in any case, you could designate one area for both, they're not right next to each other. They're within a couple of blocks of each other. I think, you know, it's not, it's, it has changed so much, the whole smoking thing. It's now at a point where restaurant patrons, most of them, don't even want to smell smoke as they go into the restaurant or come out. The neighbors don't want people in their parking lots, you know, standing around smoking, so it's, I would say, we believe it's very important that the Board of Selectmen not designate a smoking area in the Church Street parking lot. So, that leaves Adams Street. So, if you feel there needs to be one, it would have to be somewhere in the vicinity of the restaurant on Adams Street. And it's your decision to make. Restaurant will comply with whatever condition you set. We're certainly not asking for it, but if you feel it's necessary, then you would have to say that they, that we would, we would be required to identify a designated smoking area in front of the restaurant. And that's just, you know, it's not a very big opening. It's basically a doorway.
Yeah.
Because there are other storefronts also.
This is the Abbey Park. This is the language in Abbey Park. It says, "An area away from the entrance shall be designated for smokers, and a proper receptacle should be provided within 10 feet of the door on Franklin Street."
Yeah. I mean, that's-
Which is, was alluded to by one of the abutters earlier, that there's not a receptacle for it.
Okay, so that's a discussion we'll have to have. Any other questions?
Is there other information that we need? I'm not-
I don't, none that I can think of.
We have all the financial information that has come in, so we have that today. I don't think there's anything still open.
You have all the, you have all the financial information that we have currently available. And just to quickly summarize, since we didn't talk about that at all, you know, ABCC requires personal information and a Corey release form from any investor who is investing more than $50,000 in a liquor license, a restaurant with a liquor license. So, there are two investors. They're Mark Morris and Edward Chapman. They are both investing more than $50,000, and you have the Corey release form and the personal information form for each one of them. There is also a commitment for a loan from an LLC, which is a property management LLC, that has assets that they can use in order to secure a loan, and has made a commitment for $700,000. The combination of the two private investors is about $375,000, so the restaurant currently has loan commitments for approximately $1 million. It is talking to two banks, at least, about whether it may choose to take out a loan from a bank as well. And it is also still talking to individual investors who are interested in investing in the restaurant. Some of these might be smaller investors. If they invest less than $50,000, they don't need to provide personal information to ABCC. So, that's the present status of how the restaurant's being, how it's being paid for. It costs about $1.2 million to do all of the interior renovations and to pay for the startup cost for a restaurant like this. All of that is in the ABCC application. It's required that you provide that information. So, that's the information I have right now. If, so, when more, if more information becomes available, is this an investor who's giving, who's going to provide a loan of more than $50,000? That information will have to be sent to ABCC as a supplement, and it will, of course, be provided to the Board of Selectmen. It's a little, if a bank is providing a loan, the ABCC seems to want a commitment letter from the bank, because a lot of times, they don't provide the loans until they, you get the liquor license, so it was impossible to require the information prior to that, but they did. A commitment letter could say, providing you get the license. With a private loan, it's not so clear, but there may be other information ABCC wants for that other loan, and the only way I'm going to find out about that is by talking to Ryan Melville at ABCC. He's our contact person. And so, you may get something additional, but it's, it's ABCC who sets these requirements. If the selectmen do not have a major concern with any of this, then from the liquor license standpoint, you may be satisfied with what you have. That's a decision you have to make. We will provide you with any more updated information as we get it, in any case.
Are the two LLC members making an equity investment, or is it a loan?
They're making loans, and that's why they have to provide the personal information, and they each have an equity interest. One is 5%, one is 14.5%.
Okay. But their financial commitment is as a loan, not an equity investment?
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's my, you may understand this better than I do, but ask the questions and we will answer them.
No, I think you got it the other way around.
Is it reversed?
Those are equity investments.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's right. They're not just loans, you know, with no equity interest, but, I mean, you can, can you explain, can you explain that?
Yeah, I mean, the-
It's a capital contribution.
Yeah, they're making a capital contribution, and then we'll, we're doing a balance of debt and equity to finance the restaurant.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
So, what are we going to do? Are we going to close the public hearing or continue it? Because the deliberation stage is different than the public hearing piece of this, so.
Right.
So, what do we?
In, my inclination would be to close it. I don't really have any other questions at this point that I think I need to answer.
I don't either. I think we have enough information, the financial information we've received and-
Yeah, we can come back for discussion at our next meeting.
At our next meeting.
Yeah. I think the main reason being it's almost 8:30 and it's an awful lot on the agenda tonight. It will take a little while, I think, to go through these various conditions.
Right. So, that was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've given us the opportunity to respond to the questions about conditions, so at this point, I think it's up to the Board of Selectmen to decide, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to officially close the public hearing.
Yeah. So, we got the language for that someplace. Let's see. I guess we really don't have the language for it, but, so I guess I'll-
I think you just state that we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, just make the motion.
So, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing process for 556 Adams Street LLC DBA Novara.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Item seven on the agenda is a public hearing with respect to the Super Petroleum sign, which has been continued from our last meeting, actually, a few, a couple of meetings ago. And I think we do have Ned Corcoran and just yourself, or at this point, or?
Trust this will work. Good evening, Ned Corcoran. I'm an attorney, Living Milton, office in Quincy, representing Super Petroleum, and I'm joined by Mike Palermo, who is the operations director for Super Petroleum. Mike Bogazia is unable to be here this evening. And here, I've recently been engaged, so I'm very much on a listening and understanding mode, looking forward to hearing from the public and an opportunity to meet with neighbors and abutters to understand more specifically issues and concerns. So, I understand that people may be here this evening who want to speak, but I would look for an opportunity to continue the matter to another meeting until I have an opportunity to really get my arms fully around what the issues and concerns are, see whether or not we can address those issues and concerns in meetings with neighbors, and then come back before the Board to continue the hearing as appropriate.
Okay. Do we want to take that up right now, or do we want to listen, continue the hearing? I mean, continue along?
I thought Joe Prondek was here to talk-
Talk about, yeah, and I think we do.
And Bill to give us an update. I do want to hear that.
Yes. So, thank you, Ned.
Thank you, Ned.
Thank you. Good evening, Joe.
Joe Prondek, Building Commissioner.
Joe.
So, to, I guess try and cut to the chase, the approvals for this existing sign that were essentially agreed to by myself and the planning director, basically came down to the fact that, we recognized the fact that the sign had been there for a long time. At least, I've been here, working for the town for nine years. The sign has been there since, was there when I started. So, we looked at this change of, reconfiguration of the panels, difference in the lighting as simply a grandfathered process, so to speak, for lack of a better term.
Excuse me, Emily, would you like to come and join us? I'm sorry, left you out.
Given, given the fact that, there's been a number of concerns raised about that approval and the approval process, it's my determination at this point, we have sent a package off to Town Council. Town Council felt that panel replacement only on existing signs would be the only thing that would be grandfathered, so to speak. So, that does not meet that criteria.
So, replacement of panel with the same size panel?
Same size panel, same pole, et cetera. So, as Building Commissioner, I think in that, moving forward from today forward, but that we take a more conservative approach to this, given the concern that's been raised, it is my intention to essentially rescind the approvals, implied or otherwise, or granted, and ask, or require that the owner basically start the process over again, and approach this as if it were a new sign. And the reason I haven't just sent that letter out is because I, because it did end up here, and I wanted to make it clear what the procedure needs to be on this process. We are dealing with a bylaw that is, in many respects, broken, and it's difficult to interpret and navigate through, and Bill Clark and I have been doing our best based on the procedure that was set in place prior to us getting here. So, again, it is my intention to rescind the approvals, require that the owner start the process over again. Now, that, so the owner of the building then has two options. They can either agree with us and say, okay, well, we'll go back and start the process over, or they can say, no, Mr. Commissioner, we think you're wrong, and they can appeal to the zoning Board of Appeals. And that's what the process should be on the signs. The Board of Selectmen, although they are, they have the authority to grant waivers on the sign requirements, any disagreement with that needs to go to the Board of Appeals and not, you know, not back to the Board of Selectmen. So, I think I need to take this opportunity to put that out to the public and to the owners before sending the letter, that this really, there's a number of reasons in looking at this case in great detail over the last couple of weeks, there's a number of reasons that we can say, and probably should say, that the sign is not protected or grandfathered. And so, I think that's the best and most efficient route. And there's a, there's a number of things that need to be dealt with as the- And there's a, there's a number of things that need to be dealt with as the process moves forward, and that is a, we need to have a comprehensive plan of the signage that goes on this property, and, and, and that's true of every, every property. I, I think in the past, when the selectmen have granted approvals on this and other properties, people, business owners just assume that they can then go up and, you know, do as much window signage as necessary, and other temporary banners and posters and all of that stuff can just be done, and it's, it's an enormous challenge to, to, to regulate that and monitor that. So, I think that part of the approval process needs to include not just the one sign in question, but the whole sign, signage plan for a particular property. So, I'm hoping that somehow we can move to address that.
Yeah, and you, you certainly are right that the, the signed bylaw does need help, considerable help.
Yep. And we've been working toward that for, for at least three years, and-
And we found it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, either.
There is one that's going to be on the warrant in October that's a revision, so we'll see how Tom Meeting wants to deal with that. But, we are in progress. Joe's been a big help in providing comments, and the sign review committee has also been an enormous help in providing comments. So, and the planning board will have its public hearing on that soon.
So, I guess with this particular sign, I mean, the, the things we do know about it, there was a single pole sign there in the early 50s. It was, it was approved. It was going to be a side-mounted neon sign.
Correct.
At some point in time, in the 70s, was it, that it was changed to a single pole, but a top-mounted?
Yeah, I envision, you know, a spinning X-
Rotating sign.
Rectangular sign that rotated on top of that single pole. Whether it was the same pole or a different pole, we have no record.
But it was a single pole.
Single pole, yes, in the, in the similar location.
And then, where do we go from there?
At some point between, well, there was, there was a, a hearing in front of the selectmen in 1994 for signage other than the freestanding sign.
And at that point, it was still a single pole?
At that point, showed on the plan, that's still a single pole. So, sometime between 1994 and 2006.
So, is that when the canopy signage got approved, and?
We have no, we have no permit for the double pole sign.
I understand, but, but what I'm asking is that the canopy signs and, you know, the, the signs of-
There were some canopy signs involved in that. There were canopy signs, pump signs, and a couple-
So, awning signs and-
Awning signs, signs of that nature, 1994.
Okay. So, let me ask questions there, then, forgetting about the, the pole sign at this point, because it has been questions raised about the canopy signs as well. In your opinion, are those grandfathered?
Without having the plan in front of me, that would be a difficult-
Yeah.
-question to answer, especially, I don't think the 1994 approval necessarily contains specific dimensions, sizes, and locations of where the signage was on the canopy. In fact, I think it's probably a different canopy at this point.
Yeah, in terms of the awnings, I'm sure awnings wear out and they, they get replaced, you know.
Yeah.
The canopy itself, I'm not, I don't know. I wouldn't be surprised.
I believe that is a new canopy, because that was part of the planning board, site plan approval, from 2012.
Was the new canopy.
Yeah, exactly. We did it a few years ago.
That was, yeah, the canopy is definitely new and enlarged from what was originally there in 1994.
Okay. But this, this new signage request really doesn't have any signage on the canopy itself, or does it?
I, I do, I don't have a comprehensive proposal in front of us right now.
Do you know the answer to that, Ned?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm still researching it's, what I'm, I guess I'm troubled by is the notion that they're rescinding something. I'm not sure what it is that you are rescinding, or would propose to rescind. There's evidence that the two, double pole sign existed, I think, at least in, in 2000. And site plan approval that was granted by the board, the planning board allowed, although not specifically referenced in the site plan document, the plan that was incorporated shows a relocation of that sign by four feet. So, there is recognition that that sign has existed for a period of time. I'm not sure that you can rescind the existence of the sign. Maybe separate questions about items on the sign, but I think the sign itself, I question whether there's a, an ability to rescind the right to have that sign at its location.
But the planning board can't grant the right to have the sign. That's up to the Board of Selectmen, and if there's no current, if there's no permit for that particular sign, you know, whether or not-
But if the sign, but there is clear case law dealing with grandfathering of pre-existing non-conforming signs, if those signs existed in some form before the implementation of a signed bylaw. And if a sign existed, and that sign has been in that location for at least 10 years, then it doesn't need a permit that's protected under the statute of limitations. So, those are questions I think need to be delved into, but I trying to, I guess I'm trying to understand, if you're going to rescind permit, what is it that you plan to rescind? Because, are you rescinding the right to change panels, or are you rescinding the right to have that sign in its location on the corner of the lot? Because that, that obviously creates, those are two very significantly different questions that need to be understood and addressed.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I will formulate a letter that addresses all of that tomorrow and send that out, and, you know, I do believe that we have the right to rescind the entire sign, because there was no building permit specifically for it whenever it came into being. I have reviewed the plan that Mr. Corcoran provided that shows some sort of a sign was there in 2000, but it doesn't as clearly show a single or a double pole as other previous plans have. And the statute of limitations on permits, whether, or approvals issued in error, is six years. So, the relocation of the sign that happened in 2012 was less than six years ago. So, we do have the right to rescind the approval for that sign. And, and, like I said before, when I send a letter, Mr. Corcoran has the right to bring that to the Board of Appeals and say, hey, no, this sign is grandfathered, and, and have the argument heard there.
Well, let me ask, I mean, if you, i- is there a process where you could go through a re, a re-permitting process, I guess, is my question?
Well, that would be the choice. You know, we, we think, you know, we, we believe that the entire sign is not grandfathered. You can either move forward and, and start the permit process over again, and if you do that, leave the sign there for the time being and to let process vet out. Or you can disagree with me completely and go to the Board of Appeals and say, no, we're grandfathered, and we should be able to keep it.
So, Mr. Chairman, just procedurally here, we're in a public hearing. I know that there's at least one member of the, one person from the Neighborhood Association in East Milton who did ask to speak. I think we should at least, I would have liked at least to hear from them. I am a little concerned about hearing, and concern may not be the right word. I, I think we need to do a little bit more research. Joe, you're talking about an appeal to the Board of Appeals. We have a signed bylaw that says certain matters come from the sign review committee, and I see the chairman of our sign review committee is here, and thank you, John, for being here. And if you'd like to come up and be heard, I'm sure Tom would allow that.
Sure.
But there's a process in the bylaws that talks about appeal, appeals from the sign review committee's decisions coming to this board. So, there's a few questions here that need to get answered, that, just the short discussion here tonight, I think, has raised more questions than answers. So, I'd like to see if we could hear from whoever, from the public, might want to be heard on this, and then we need to figure out, Ned has asked for continuance, Joe has indicated he'd like to issue a order tomorrow. I think we need to do a little more research before we decide what we're doing here.
I, I agree with that, yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I was just trying to get some background information again, just to kind of be clear on what we're talking about, and then I did intend to-
Okay.
...open it up, but.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from, from, from the public, but also, I think it's, it's best that we, you know, acquire a little bit more information about some of these new items that were being discussed tonight, because I think that, you know, for Joe to just make, you know, notice tomorrow and, and without, you know, Ned wanting the ability to probably work with the community and, and try to shuffle some things out, I think it'd be important, a little time.
I, I think that is important, because I, I think, you know, from what I'm hearing from, from Ned, he would like to meet the, the Neighborhood Association and the, and the abutters, and, and seeing if there is any way to, to come to a meeting of the minds. And, and I, I know that the Neighborhood Association and, and, and the abutters, while they're concerned about the sign, clearly understand there has to be some sign there, and there may be a way to have a meeting of the minds, so, so I think you should be given that opportunity, because that would certainly have a bearing on, on this proceeding as well.
I, I mean, I am happy to hold off on that, if there's consensus that that's a productive avenue.
Yeah, that being said, I still want to hear from-
Yes.
See?
Yes.
So, was there a person out there that? Yes, thank you. Yes.
So, which one of these mics works?
I think either one's working now.
Okay. Members of the Board of Selectmen, first of all, I'll be brief.
Can I just get your name and address, please?
I'm Joseph O'Neill. I'm going to say, okay. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Joe O'Neill. Presently, I am a board member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. I've been a resident of Milton for over 60 years, and I've served on several boards, including the Warrant Committee and the Historical Commission. I'm not here tonight to discuss the removed large yellow banner declaring that you could get an inspection sticker of Super Petroleum, nor am I upset to the fact they had a blinking light in their store window for a while. I just wanted to address one issue, and that is this Petro sign. I am confident that my views represent not only those of the several thousand residents of precincts six and seven, but also those of the rest of the town of Milton. The current sign is inappropriate, not only for East Milton, but also for all areas of the town of Milton. This type of sign is appropriate for highway locations. I have not observed the Super Petro sign along the Providence Highway in Dedham, where there's one strip mall after another. On the other hand, I have looked at and observed and taken notes on at least nine of the Super signs. They're mainly around Braintree, I went to a funeral in Brockton, just coming back that way. None were as high as East Milton. None featured price illuminations as, as intense as in East Milton. I'll use just one example to illustrate my point. The current sign illuminates one green price and two red gray gas prices. They are not fluorescent, but have the same effect. The Fararo property is 12 yards from this sign. Many of you have seen the photo of Kathy Fararo's, I think I pronounced her name right, living room. This is the, if you haven't seen it, it's available. The reflections from the green and red prices are illuminated at a number four level, and it creates a sensation of Christmas in July in her living room. This is unacceptable. Simply put, I and other members of the East Milton Association are not opposed to the sign, we're not opposed to signage in that spot that it is now. We just want Super Petroleum to lower the sign and lower the volume. So, I thank you all. I think it's pretty clear what we want. If you have questions, I'll make. Ned, if you have a question, I'd be sure to answer them.
Now, when you say lower the sign, you're talking about the price, the, the entire sign?
Yeah.
Bring everything?
There's just, okay, we discussed it, Bill had a wonderful meeting with us, and, you know, like, there's a cash price, and then there's a non-cash price. The other signs that I looked at from the same company, they don't have all these prices. There's a panel which is going to be for, I don't know, Joe's garage or something, and then there's another one that's going to say that they have food or something in the store. There's so many ways of just making, bringing it down in height, and maybe having one price or two. Most of the others aren't. Even the one in Rosin deals only, I'm, I don't feel small next door, which is kind of weird, but, you know, it's, it's not that high, and they're not illuminated in this manner. This is, I, I, it appears that the technology of lighting is, is ahead of our signage laws. I mean, this is pretty close to fluorescent, and I think we have in our signage laws about fluorescent. It's not fluorescent, but, boy, it really beams.
Right.
I, I don't, it doesn't serve a purpose. I, I, you know, my other thing is too, why would you upset the neighbors? I mean, there's so many thousands of people that want to use that station.
Joe, I think we have a very good opportunity. I think with, with Joe Prondak, our commissioner, talking about some language that, that, that might be helpful, and also with, with Mr. Corcoran coming on board, you know, having a good feel for the community, being a Milton resident, understanding, you know, the landscape, and, and hopefully having the opportunity to get, you know, people together to get something that might work for everybody. I, I think that that's our hope. I think that, you know, I, I know that Emily and you guys have been working really hard on this stuff, and, and I think that, you know, it's a great opportunity for us, I think, to relook at where we are and hopefully come up with something that works within the fabric of this community.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm the chair of our sign review committee, too, and just in terms of, of the LED technology
My name is John Zickwitz from the Milton Sign Committee.
So, John, my first question is, and, because my only knowledge is, is just driving around and, and seeing them, and, and clearly there are more and more of these LED price signs popping up as stations redo their, their facades. I think all of the Canton stations on 138 are now LED. You see, I could see another example in Canton, it's not a gas station, but it is in a residential neighborhood. The, there is an LED lit sign on the hospital that, on the street that runs between Washington Street and Canton, back out to Turnpike Street, right by the cemetery there. There's some kind of a hospital there, great big LED sign, you know, similar to these gas stations. So, the first question is, is how prevalent are these, and is this the, is this the way where we see these in most towns and most?
I, I don't know that for sure, but I know technology is, it's just, everything's more computer-based, so it's easier to change the price by a computer than to send somebody out there with the numbers and, and change them. So, it just makes it simple for, simpler for the operator to just walk over his computer and just changes, change price.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's just easier. So, I think as more stations again retrofitted, they're probably going to go to the easier method than the old method of go putting the numbers up.
Okay.
So, I have a question. I wonder if this data suggests, have you, have you guys gotten into that? Does data suggest that a fluorescent sign may bring more business versus opposite?
Oh, I don't know, no. And that, well, these aren't fluorescent, they're LED.
Or LED, rather.
Yeah.
So, you know, and, and just my question, just because it is at the gateway to Milton, you do have to go buy it, and it does, does it make it more attractive to a, I mean, are there studies that makes it more attractive? I mean, those are some of the things that-
No, I just think, I don't know if there's studies that say that. I just know LED from my profession, I'm an architect, and lighting now is all changing to LED, it's just much more energy efficient, lasts longer, so it's cheaper for the owners to put in LED lighting, you get a better quality of light. So, that's where the whole lighting industry is going, is towards LED. Whether it's more attractive or not, or attracts business, that I don't know. But I know that's where lighting industry in general, in my profession, is going, is towards LED. People, a lot of electric companies are giving rebates. My profession is more geared towards hospitals, and hospitals getting big rebates from power companies to replace all their lights with LEDs, because, just because they last longer and they use, and they use less energy.
And I guess the, the, the second question I would have is, in terms of the intensity, I guess clearly from the pictures we can see, I mean, it, the, the LED light, and, and I don't know if that picture was before they, they toned down the, the intensity- was before they toned down the intensity of the light, but let's assume for a minute it is an after picture, and it's still intense, and it down to a, from a nine to a four, a nine to a two, whatever that means. Are there other ways to diffuse the light or make it such that it won't be intrusive to?
Well, we did, at our committee meeting, we did make a suggestion that if it, when dialed down, if it was still too bright, maybe they could get a smoke gray lens or something to attach to the face of it to take maybe the glare off those LEDs, that you could still see the price through it, but it would tone it down further.
But with the glare.
I don't, I've been by there a couple of times, it looked bright to me, but I don't know what level it was at when I went by there to see it.
Yeah, I understand, because I don't usually see it from the, you know, coming from the north going south, I'm usually seeing it the other way. My understanding is, coming from the north going south, that part has been toned down.
When they put the sign up originally, the sign had, it was at a nine. They've since turned it down to a four, they've supposedly since turned it down to a two. The issue still goes back to when they first met with the Sign Review Committee, the idea was, the top sign was going to be backlit letters so that there wouldn't be the brightness that comes out of the top box, that the letters on the bottom would be, could be bright going from south to north. So, going from East Milton Square going to the expressway, those numbers could be bright because those couldn't be seen from the residences in town. Coming from the north and going south, coming from the expressway going to the Wood Road Extension or taking a left onto Wood, there would be the smoked glass that could then cut the glare from those lights. The letter that we had with the owner at the time was, this is what, these are the steps that we're going to take, and we just never got to the end step. We've been here talking about everything but that end step, was how do we adjust the, how do we adjust the colors on the backside? They've got two gas prices and a diesel price.
Right.
You've got regular, you've got premium, and then you've got a diesel. So, the diesel is the green.
Right. It's...
And I believe that's standard of the other gas stations in town, too. They all have three prices on their pylons.
Yes.
The Shell station does, I think they all do, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't have a cash...
But they have the letters.
Right. They've got the stick-up letters.
Yeah. The Shell station has a stick-up, yeah.
Yes.
I guess the other gas station does, too, right?
Yes, yes.
So, it's similar with the LED at this point.
Shell is due to put up a new canopy, so unfortunately, we may be seeing them soon, too.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
I don't really have questions. I guess just some thoughts on where we go from here.
Sure.
Because when we met back in June, I think it was, at this point, we raised the question of grandfathering, so I'm glad we've looked into that, and Joe and Bill, you've done some work on that, you've talked with town council, but it seems that we now have some additional grandfathering questions, because Bill sent us a photo of the sign from 2012, which did not at the time have additional...
Didn't have the LED portion, yeah.
Certain panels in here, so there are more panels on the sign now than there were even a couple of years ago, and that seems to not have ever been approved by the Sign Review Committee or by anybody. So, you know, coming in here, I thought that we were going to be closing the public hearing and making a decision based on that grandfathering issue, but Joe's raised the question about the sign itself, not just the extra panels or the lights. So, and Ned is brand-new to representing the owner of the business and has just come into this and has asked for a continuance. So, I think we have a number of questions that have come up, but we still need some clarification that we don't really have, and I think we need to do some legal research and get town council's views on some of these grandfathering questions. So, I would be, contrary to where I was, I would be inclined to continue this until the next meeting, to see if we can get some of these questions answered, be sure that we have all the information in front of us. We don't have open enzims, and maybe there'll be some discussion between the Neighborhood Association and the owner in the meantime, but I think the bigger question right now is, is still the legal questions.
Yes, I agree. Now, I mean, in fairness to the owner, too, I think, and I do agree that we should continue this, but I think in fairness to the owner and to everybody, we should look to close this at the, at our next meeting. So, let's get those questions answered. So, you know, between Bill, John, Michael, Anne Marie, you know, legal counsel, let's make sure that at our next meeting, we have all the, you know, everything drilled down, we know, and, you know, I raised the other point, it just kind of came to mind as I was sitting here, that, you know, the canopies, the awnings and those things, because those are also in question by some people, you know, so to what degree are they or are they not grandfathered? You know, the canopy, looks like, a picture I'm looking at here, it looks like the original Milton Gas canopy that went up in 2012 had no lettering on it, but I can't tell, I'm looking at it as one picture from one side.
They would have had to have come, because it was a new canopy, they would have had to have come back to the Board of Selectmen for the new signage on it.
Right.
So...
And it looks like Super Petroleum has just got a small lettering that they're proposing. I don't know if that's proposed or if that's actually there, where it says Super.
Is that proposed, Bill?
I don't know if it's up there or not, I know that that's what they're proposing.
Okay.
It's unlit, and it's just final letters on the red band.
Right.
I know that the Sign Review Committee had seen, when it was, when the new canopy went up, the previous owner had come in and said, "This is what I want to put," and it was Milton Gas on the corners. So, it would have been in the same places that this says Super Petroleum, the other would have said Milton Gas.
Right.
He just didn't do it.
Now, we've also got the dilemma to deal with here, that we've got three separate businesses within this building. Two of them are basically the same owner, the convenience store and the gas station. My understanding is the repair shop though is a separate owner.
That's my understanding.
It's just a lease within the company.
Right. So, there are three businesses operating, the convenience store is a separate, either corporation or LLC, the Super Petroleum is a separate entity, even though they're both controlled by the same person, and then you've got a third unrelated person running a business. So, there is a need for three signs, you know, advertising each one of those entities.
I think Joe Prondak's suggestion that there be a single plan that shows all of the signs on the site that the selectmen then approve makes a lot of sense in this situation.
And then our question is, too, if you've got a pole sign, you need wayfaring signs in terms of, where is the convenience store, where is the repair shop, once you get onto the property? And in essence, that's what they have right now. You have the pole sign saying, "Here we are, we're a repair shop, we're a convenience store, we're a gas station." And then when you look at the property, okay, well, now here's where the repair shop is, here's where the gas station is, here's where the convenience store is, is pretty much what we have.
Correct, that's what the awnings are for.
But it technically doesn't comply with the sign by law because sign by law says only one sign, one exterior sign, I believe.
For business?
I believe it does, yeah. For business.
Right. So, you've got three businesses, three signs.
Right.
Right. But then you have the pole sign, too, so...
Well, then the pole sign would count as one sign, so they'd have to figure out how they wanted to do that. For example, they might have the pole sign be only for Super Petroleum, the convenience store sign would be on the awning, the other business would be on the awning, that's one way of doing it.
Right.
And then there wouldn't be one on the canopy, if you wanted to stick to that recommendation. And then that would reduce the number of panels on the main sign.
Or the selectman could grant relief.
Or the selectman could get grant relief would be the other option, yeah.
Well, yeah, and then that brings up the question, of course, should the Sign Review Committee first be weighing in on all of these new questions that really are, I think, might be coming up for the first time? I could be wrong, John, but I'm not sure whether all these questions that are coming up now are something that you've already looked at. But the other issue we need to, in addition to the grandfathering legal question, we need to review the bylaws and consider the role versus, of this board versus the role of the Board of Appeals, and make sure we're clear on who's doing what and who has the right jurisdiction here. Bill or Joe, the Neighborhood Association sent us a video of a new flashing sign in a window that says "Open." Have you looked into that, and what can you report to us on that?
I can report to you on that issue in particular. Let me back up for a minute to the, to the yellow banner, which required the inspection, was advertising the inspections. I think we got that about eight or ten days ago, it took me a day or two to get down. I went to the site, I talked to the owner of the gas station, not the gas station, the repair shop, and I explained a little bit about what was happening with the signs and the dilemma that we're in, and I asked him to remove the yellow banner. And after about a half an hour conversation, he finally agreed, and he took it down. When I came into work on Monday, I had the concern forwarded to me about the flashing sign, the open sign in the repair garage's window. I didn't get there yesterday, I went there today, and I approached the owner of the repair shop, and I said, "That flashing sign, for the time being, needs to come down. It is a lighted sign, it's not one that's approved." And he said to me, "Absolutely, I will not take that sign down. You can't make me take it down, I will get my attorney." And he went on for a period of time, and then I just, I left the site. So, part of the challenges when you have a setup like this is, you know, perhaps the upper management of the business comes and gets an approval from the board, but some, that doesn't always translate down to the people who actually run the businesses, and I think that's a little bit about what's happening here and at other sites, the Shell gas station, the other gas station on Granite Avenue on the same side of the street. So, that was disappointing, but I did go and try to address it, and...
So, for right now, it's still flashing?
I'm not sure if, when I was there, it actually was not flashing, it was just there in the window. Wasn't on, wasn't turned on.
What's the next step in a case like that, where you've gone down, you've explained that the sign is not permitted, so it's illegal or not allowable, however you phrase it, and they've, and I imagine it doesn't happen that often, but then they say, "You know what, it's my sign, I'm leaving it up, I don't care what the bylaw says." What is your next step? How does, how does that process go?
I would have to formally cite them.
Okay.
And say you have a sign that doesn't comply with the bylaw, and you have to remove it. And then if it's not removed, we have the option of bringing it to criminal court, which is a long, several-year process, or we could bring it to civil court through our attorneys, which is an expensive process. So, again, it's a...
It's a question I've had a number of times recently from people, so...
Typically, what we do with zoning violations, if we're going to, if they get to that point, is go through the criminal?
We try to go through the criminal court.
And you've told me several times how many months...
When it gets to the point where the offending party continues to refuse to cooperate, we try to avoid that at all costs.
Right, because it's months and months and months.
And that's the way, that's just the nature of the criminal court.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
So, we've got a lot of issues to deal with, you're correct. So, I would, I would entertain a motion to...
I'll move that we continue the hearing until September 15th.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing not on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I should have asked, is the 15th? Good for you, Emily.
We'll have to talk about the time, I have a client meeting earlier in the evening, but I should be able to, if it's later in your agenda, but we can talk about it.
Okay. Take a moment. Thank you, everybody. Let's see. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to go slightly out of order because the next person has to catch a flight very shortly, so I'm going to move to item nine on the agenda, which is a conference with Dmitry, is it Petion, Chairman of Pilot Committee? How bad did I do with the name, Dmitry?
I've heard worse.
[laughter]
Since we're getting a little late in the evening, I wanted to get going. The...
By the way, I'm Jim Henderson.
Oh, sorry.
Member of the committee and also member of the Board of Assessors.
Hi, Jim.
Jim. I apologize for overlooking this thing. Jim.
I had a presentation deck, but I'll move ahead without it, and it's been forwarded...
Do you need a copy, Dmitry? I have a paper copy if you need it.
No, I have a paper copy.
Oh, okay.
I'll go through it. Milton adopted a pilot policy in the late 90s. Under that policy, certain nonprofit institutions make limited unstructured and at time infrequent pilot contributions to the community. The current Pilot Committee was formed by the Milton Board of Selectmen. The chartered objective of the committee was to review the current pilot policies in place by various Massachusetts cities and towns, and to make a recommendation for a new pilot policy for the town of Milton. In our previous presentation to this body, we highlighted the need for the town to formulate a robust pilot framework and for the town administrator to refactuate the implementation of that framework. Nonprofit organizations contribute directly to the quality of life within the community. They provide many benefits to our community. They educate the young and old, take care of our health needs, and provide various services to those in need in the community. Many of these nonprofits are great economic generators. They generate payroll and sales taxes for the Commonwealth and other municipalities. The benefit of these organizations are shared broadly, but the associated cost is borne by the Milton taxpayer. The town is heavily reliant on property taxes. Residential properties account for 94% of all property taxes collected. Compared to other communities, Milton is far more reliant on residential property taxes than other cities and towns in Massachusetts. For example, only 38% of revenues collected in Boston is reliant on residential property tax. A significant portion of the potential tax base in Milton is exempt. Forty-one percent of the land area in the town is tax exempt, and under preposition two and a half, the remaining taxable base can only grow by two and a half percent per year. That's some data, but since we don't have the slide, I'll move on. In order to maintain the financial health of the community so as to continue to provide a range of quality services, the town must preserve its existing tax base and expand revenue sources where reasonably possible. It is the policy of the town to distribute the burden of costs in a fair method among all users of services, citizens, taxpayers, and nonprofit institutions alike. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, enables the granting of tax exempt statuses to certain nonprofit organizations. Once an organization is granted an exemption, the town cannot legally require that organization to pay a property tax or bind that organization to give up their rights to these legal exemptions. Therefore, the committee has outlined the following pilot framework for adoption by the town. The town will seek voluntary pilot agreements with all tax exempt institutions within the community that own real property or that rent real property from the town. These pilot agreements shall be based upon fair market value and tax levy. Pilot agreements shall be established on the basis that the nonprofit organization's payment amount is equal to the percentage of tax levy that supports the critical services of the town's infrastructure, including police, fire, and public operations. of the town's infrastructure, including police, fire, and public operations. It has been determined this share is equal to at least twenty-five percent of the full When a nonprofit organization enters into a voluntary pilot agreement, the town may offer to phase in pilot contribution to spread the budget impact over a period of time not to exceed five years. Community-based nonprofits will have the opportunity to receive consideration for community services that benefit Milton residents and that directly reduce the cost of providing services. The town and institutions will identify qualifying services and negotiate a fair value for these services. For example, an educational institution might make its athletic facilities available for town programs, reducing the necessity to develop and maintain new town facilities. Nonprofits would be able to earn credits up to fifty percent of their targeted pilot payments for the provision of such services. A pilot agreement would remain in force for the entire tenure of its contractual term as long as the use and value established in the pilot agreement have not changed. All property under a pilot agreement must still meet all the requirement for eligibility for exempt status. A pilot agreement does not replace the requirement that each organization seeking property tax exemption must file a state tax form, A B C, with the Board of Assessors on the, on or before March first of each year. We had suggested the following guidelines for the agreement. Recognizing the financial limitation of nonprofit organizations, the town should expect to update the pilot agreement with nonprofit organizations when they are in the process of acquiring property or considering an expansion of existing real estate holdings or planning of new construction on existing property. This approach has the pragmatic advantage of allowing exempt institutions to include the cost of any pilot agreement in the financial planning of the new expanded facility. In the case of a significant change in the property resulting in a change in the property fair market value that occur after a pilot agreement has been established, the town should adjust the pilot agreement to include a phased-in change of payment on the addition per the agreement or per and agreed-upon scheduled. In the event that there is a change in the use of a property under a pilot agreement, the town may review the eligibility of the exemption and the term and conditions of the pilot agreement and propose such changes as may be needed to reflect the change in the value of the property. In the event that a nonprofit gives up ownership of the parcel, the parcel will revert back to a taxable status. In the event that a nonprofit organization purchases a parcel from a nonprofit organization that has agreed to a pilot agreement, the parcel will revert back to a taxable status pending submission of state tax form three A B C. The determination by the Board of Assessors of its tax exemption eligibility and the completion of a pilot agreement will be, uh, agreement with the new owner will be required. In this instance, the town may elect to seek a voluntary pilot agreement with the new nonprofit acquirer of the property. All nonprofits located within the town limits that own tax exempt real estate should contribute to the pilot program. We see in other communities, uh, pilots have been very effective, and we have data showing participation in Boston, um, that's extremely high. Exemptions should be made for religious organizations and those nonprofits owning land value at less than ten million dollars. The committee has also recently noticed that because pilot programs are voluntary, cities and towns are having difficulty enforcing their policy and collecting pilot fees. Therefore, the committee suggests that the Board of Selectmen search for other methods to help to implication of providing supports for nonprofits. In a report published, um, in November twenty-eleven entitled "A Property Tax Exemption for Nonprofit in Revenue" by the Lincoln Institute, the report strongly suggests that town explore, uh, the use of usage fee for services provided to nonprofits to offset certain costs. The committee has also discussed more creative ideas, such as establishing a foundation where nonprofit could offer support for certain aspects of Milton operation. This approach might allow more flexibility in seeking contributions and could enable the town to offer incentive for certain level of participation, such as naming right for specific, specific town facilities, as the Curry Fire Station. We have a fire station on one thirty-eight that's very dilapidated, that's right in Curry's backyard, um, so, potential synergy in working with Curry to, um, effectuate, um, a, a reconstruction of that station, uh, might be, uh, an area for the town, for the board to look at. In conclusion, the Pilot Committee members believe that Milton nonprofits are quite healthy and are likely to grow and place an even larger burden on the remaining taxpayers. There is no simple solution for this problem. A well-implemented pilot program can be a good first step for the Pilot Committee members that we suggest, and more comprehensive study may be conducted, um, by the town. But based on what other communities are doing, based on our lack of other sources for revenue, based on our restriction with regard to property taxes and prep two and a half, uh, we strongly encourage, uh, an effective pilot program, and we encourage the Board of Selectmen to our, to our administrator to administer such a program.
Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
First, I want to commend you on putting this report together. I, um, think that the pilot program is, is much needed here in town, and I think that it would create some opportunity, um, you know, for, uh, a number of, um, you know, projects that the town's working on. I think that, um, during your, during, uh, a lot of your investigations and stuff, did you, did you come up with an assessment, um, from the nonprofits, whether it be Curry, Milton Academy, the hospital, on what they're currently doing? Any in-kind? Um, did you come up with a list of that? Uh, 'cause I'd be curious to know what they're currently doing, because I think that to make pilots truly work, I think having a good partnership with each, whether it be hospital, school, um, to get together and, and kind of work together to say, "Hey, look at, you know, we wanna make this work for the town and for the, for the nonprofit." Has there been a list created on what they're currently doing for the town?
The, under our charter, we were restricted from directly interacting, um...
Okay.
With, with those organizations. From data that's available, um, there are, uh, there are limited pilot, um, contributions that have been made to the town. Those contributions are far below the value of the assets, um, and the twenty-five percent recommendation of...
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm aware of those, and, and, but I'm curious, because I know that, I know that, say, Milton Academy may give fields, um, you know, to some of the baseball organizations, and, you know, I'm just curious that, that, you know, when we do get involved in this, that we, um, really get a good assessment of what each place is actually doing, and then where we see a good fit to help, you know, our town and residents.
In, in Boston, uh, they do have a report with, within the guidelines, uh, promoted by the City of Boston as to what each nonprofit organization is contributing in cash, in, I'm sorry, in-kind.
In-kind, yeah.
Not in cash, and it has to meet certain requirements. And I think that we would want to institute that to get, you know, a clear picture of what they're doing, because Boston allows, whatever the contribution is for that particular year, they can make half of that in, in-kind and half in, in cash.
I'm familiar with Boston, and that's why I was asking about that, because I think that that's, um, a good avenue, um, you know, and I think that it, a lot of it's based on relationships and sharing information, so I think that it's, uh, maybe a good start.
I guess the one question I have, and just kind of jumping on, on that thought, is, you know, that quid pro quo, um, you know, of in-kind services, um, does Boston have a way of valuing, and, 'cause it become, it becomes difficult, you know, what is the value of using a baseball field for...
They do have usage charges that they have, so, for instance, you know, if it was an athletic facility, and not all of this is athletics, I mean, it could be scholarships for instance.
Right, yeah.
Matter of fact, I was on, uh, the Joe Mocley Scholarship at Northeastern, and that was one of the, um, one of the things that Northeastern University did for the City of Boston was provide certain scholarships for people that qualified. So, I mean, those things could happen, that could happen at, 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 at Curry, but they do have, um, you know, athletic fees, um, so, for instance, it could be a out-of, out-of, um, out-of-town or, or out-of-town fee, or, and then they could apply that, okay? Um, a, a, a non, um, you know, a, a non, I don't know, user, uh, fee, you know, typical user fee, so...
But, but the, the city does have a way of, of...
They do have a way of calculating it, yeah.
Yeah, they have specific guidelines. They have to submit a report showing how they're calculating it, and it has to meet the criteria that Boston has set up.
That has been established, okay.
Yes.
I think the bottom of the thing that we presented in our first presentation was the need for the town to develop such a matrix to evaluate, um, services that are offered, um, by the nonprofits. In the case of Boston, where most of the major institutions offer, um, scholarships, for example, to Boston Scholars, BU offers a swing of scholarship to Boston public school kids, uh, Northeastern does the same, and so on. The actual cash value of that scholarship goes towards...
Right.
Part of their contribution.
That's, that's pretty simple to value, yeah.
Um, in, in the case where there are services that are being offered, um, there are matrices that are, that are used to calculate the value of that service.
Okay.
If, for example, a healthcare facility, uh, put on a health fare, um, there is a value to the community for that health fare, there is a, there is a cost associated with putting on that health fare. So, a parata share of the cost associated with that fare may go towards that pilot contribution. So, the town administrator, or in the case of Boston, the city gets together, uh, in some cases, after these organizations fill out the form and say, "This is worth X," and negotiate whether or not it is worth X or if it's worth X minus, um, N.
Okay. Second question I have, um, yeah, unlike, unlike a Boston where there are, are many, many nonprofits that would meet that metric of, of, you know, in, in the case of Milton, we're really talking three.
Three, yes.
Um, so, if one doesn't get on board, then the other two may not get, you know, I mean, it's, is it more difficult because we're only dealing with a, such a small number of, you know, granted, they, they have quite a bit of property, and I definitely agree with you, that if you even value them at twenty-five percent, um, you know, it would be some significant revenue. Um, you know, I'm, I guess my, my question or concern is we're, unlike Boston, where there, there are so many, if you don't get, you know, a few of them to sign up, you've still got a large number. Um, here, we don't.
Yeah, but, but I would think, you know, you look at Boston, they just issued their report, uh, in July, and they raised twenty-eight million in cash payments, pilot payments. They're in the fourth year of their, uh, phased-in program. And, uh, for example, Beth Israel Deaconess in Boston contributed two-point-five million in cash. So, they're doing it in Boston, and Peter Healy was on the board for a period of time. Uh, I, I think we have a good starting point there, and say, you know, if you're doing it in Boston, why not Milton? We are providing those support services.
Sure.
And I think if we can get one on board, it, it'll start the process, because they are consuming services, and, uh, the, the fact of the matter is, whatever they're not paying, uh, is absorbed by or covered by the residential taxpayers.
Sure.
And that number can be ten to fifteen percent of your tax bill is covering what, i- if they were fully taxable entities. Ten to fifteen percent of your tax bill represents what they're not paying. So, that's a pretty significant number and has an impact on every homeowner, uh, in, in, in Milton. So, in, in, and they're a stakeholder. I'm not trying to make them out to be, you know, the bad guys here, because by law, they don't have to pay, but I think they're stakeholders in the town, and I think they should be part of this process, and that's what I'd like to see, the next phase of this, is whether it's the town administrator, uh, reaching out to start that process, to see if we can put something together.
I was going to ask about Peter, because in your list of the members, you don't, you don't list him, but Peter Healy is the CEO of BID Milton.
Yes.
He was a member of the committee, did he step down from the committee?
As we got further into, um, putting together a policy, because of, uh, a lack of participation from other nonprofit, uh, Peter did not, Peter's position was that, um, he didn't want to be on both sides of the equation, and it was simpler for him to step aside, uh, from the Pilot Committee and wait for the committee to put forth a policy and for the Board of Selectmen to adopt that policy and for the town to move forward, uh, with that policy before, uh, BID Milton would reengage to determine what their contribution, if any, was going to be to the town.
I wasn't aware that he had stepped down, but, uh, but I was glad that he participated, at least in the initial stages.
Yeah, I too would like to see us get involved now. Um, I think that, uh, I, I think it is important to, to, um, to work with all of these groups and to articulate all the good that they are doing, because I think that that's number one, that they are doing a lot of good for our town, and a lot of times, you just don't realize it, um, it just isn't out there. So, an assessment would be great, um, and then to find ways, uh, to work together to provide educational, athletic, and health opportunities for the town in lieu of taxes. I think it's important that, um, we all work together to, I think it's great for everyone. I think it's a win-win for both, uh, whether it be a school or a hospital and the community to work together, and I think that it will benefit the tax base, uh, at the end of the day.
I agree, I, I agree. I mean, I'd like to commend the committee also, and I think you, you've made great strides in terms of coming up with those, those policy ideas, and, um, I mean, certainly enough here to formulate a, a policy. Um, I'm, I'm a little interested in, you, you mentioned user fees and how something like that might work. I mean, clearly, you, you can't charge a user fee for police, you can't charge a user fee for fire, I wouldn't think, um, so what's left?
I think we, we saw those maybe in some other states that they were doing that, exploring that with some of the universities.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I, I agree, I don't think I've seen it here in Massachusetts implemented.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't imagine how it would work. But, but, you know, that aside, I think there are a lot of great ideas in here, and, and I think we are ready to go to the next step. It's just a matter of, of formulating that policy and, and, you know, I, I would hope the committee could kind of...
We have a draft of the policy, they've given us that.
Okay.
So, and I think it is a good draft. I, I did have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt, but if you think, while we're doing questions. The last time you were in, Dimitri and Jim, which several months ago now, might even have been last year, at that point, there was some talk about, is it just the largest three institutions, or is it a wider group also of some intermediate group of nonprofits? Now, you're, the last guideline you have here on page four is that you're recommending that there be an exception for any nonprofit that owns land valued at less than ten million dollars.
Correct.
So, obviously, you've had some more discussion on that. Could you give us a little bit about what your thoughts were?
Uh, one of the thing that we did early on was to identify the nonprofits in the community and to identify the size of those nonprofits. When we did the initial data gathering, what we did was to group the nonprofits into three categories. Those nonprofits that had five million or less in property values, um, those that were between five and fifteen, and those that were greater than fifteen million. What we found was that the majority of the nonprofits in town were far smaller, and they were in that, um, zero to five, um, million range. We had four organizations that were in that five to, um, twenty million dollar range. Those organizations were, uh, Boston Council for Boy Scouts, which were valued at twelve-point-six million dollars, based on the, uh, last set of data that we had, uh, Congregation of Sisters of St. Joseph, um, Font Bonn, which was at twelve-point-one million, Cunningham, seven million, and La Brea at six million. We had four organizations in town that were, um, at... We had four organizations in town that were, um, at or greater than 15 million dollars in valuation. Milton Academy, uh, was about 106 million in valuation. Curry College was at 90, and that's prior to a lot of that new construction. Milton Hospital was at 76 million, and the Roman Archdiocese was at 23.7 million. And of, after 23.7 million, uh, they were paying taxes and full million of that number. So, when we looked at that group, because of the amount of work that was going to be involved in getting everyone in, engaged and to participate, the choice was to sort of like, go after the big guys first. Set, set a, uh, high watermark, a low watermark, uh, if you would, and say, "Okay, let's identify everybody over 10 million dollars, and let's get those guys involved. Once we get those guys involved, we can go back and lower that number to get more people involved, once we had a process that was very well-defined." We wanted to make sure that because of, um, limitation in terms of resources that's available to the town, that we focus our energy in going after some of the bigger fish, um, in the pool, so to speak.
I think that does make sense. I just, clearly, that's, that's where the, the larger dollars are going to be anyway, so. And, and I do like the idea of, of, like you said, lowering that bar as, as time goes on.
We're, we're completing the FY16 revaluation, and, and I know these numbers are going to change significantly, especially with what's going on at Curry with the recent building.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, those numbers, I think, are going to, you know, gravitate a little higher in valuation.
Sure. So, so I guess the next step is, is, is the adoption of the policy, and then formulation of, of a plan as to implement, um, that policy, which I think is going to be the, the challenge, to, so to say.
Yes.
You know, given the fact that we have such limited resources in terms of employees in the town, and, and, and it stretches so thin to begin with, you know, where we start? But, um, but it's, it's certainly worth looking, it's, it's certainly worth formulating a plan for.
I think that looking at some best practices, you know, from, from other communities that have succeeded in this, are going to be helpful for us, once we do adopt this policy.
Yeah, that's a good question. Are, are there, outside of Boston, are there any other Massachusetts communities, you know, similar to us, or, or even slightly larger than us, that have had a successful plan in place? Because we're not Boston, we don't have the resources that Boston has.
Did you look at that question, about other towns?
There, there are several other towns that have implement, implemented pilot policies, including Andover, um, and they have been successful in getting the organizations in their community to actively participate.
So, that may, that may be worth, that may be worthwhile looking, you know, having town administrator reach out to an Andover or a Brookline, uh, see how they've formulated their plan, um, see what their policy statement looks like as well. And, um, I mean, I, I like this as a policy statement, so it's just a matter of how they implement it, really. So...
I think the committee did good work to propose this policy for us, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Is that what we do, put this on a future agenda?
Yes.
For discussion?
Yeah. And, like all our other things, something we shouldn't wait too long on, and, you know, want to get too, too cold, and, so it's...
I agree. I think the sooner, sooner the better. I think they've, they've put some great work into this, and I think that, you know, you know, having Anne Marie start to look into some of these other towns that have had some successes, while also accumulating, um, you know, some sort of a list of what is already occurring from, from within town, from these places. Because I know that some of these places have contributed, um, you know, in cer- certain ways, and, and, you know, I think ultimately, at the end of the day, we won't have a long-term good partnership with them.
That's right.
And find ways where we do have gaps where they can help in lieu of taxes, you know?
Cash payments would be nice, too, right?
Well, absolutely.
The, the, the Boston motto is 50, 50% cash, 50% inclined.
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, um, we'll shift back to item eight on the agenda, which is a, uh, conference with Caroline Cincella, um, Public Health Director, about the CAC, the new CAC update. Hi, Caroline.
Hi, everyone. How are you tonight? Good. So, Caroline Cincella, Health Director. I'm giving an update of the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee. So, the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee has met just twice. On April 30th, we met, and there was an overview of the legal requirements for the committee. The Mass Port Enabling Act provides the Mass Port, um, $250,000 annually. The regular meetings will meet just quarterly, and all meetings are open to the public. It was voted to set aside $10,000 to draft bylaws, which they're in the process of doing right now. Our second meeting on June 25th, we did not have a quorum, um, not even close to a quorum, which was very disappointing. Uh, the meetings have not been productive so far, and the role of this committee still has not been defined. There's no missions or no goals have been set yet. So, I just wanted to get you, um, an update of where we are right now. Today, I just found out we have our next meeting October 1st. So, they finally set, um, our next meeting.
Hopefully, there'll be a quorum at that one for you, right?
I hope so. So, 30 have been appointed so far, and we're still waiting for nine appointments at this, at this time.
So, 30 members have been appointed?
Yes.
And what is it, is, there's one from, from each community. Boston gets a bunch, though, right?
Yes. I think like five, I think.
Okay. That is kind of disappointing, but, uh, hopefully, it will...
I hope there'll be a quorum the next time. So, we'll see. And then I'll report back
Great.
when I get more information.
Thank you.
Okay, now?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Wait a long time, to get...
I know.
Thanks for staying.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Caroline.
Okay, now, item 10 on the agenda is a conference with, uh, Stan Janaga, uh, Chair of the DPW Needs Assessment Committee. Hey, Stan.
Hi, Stan.
Hi, Stan.
I can do it for you, just let me know when.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Shall I, do I have to be recorded, and I'll sit here, or?
It needs to be in the microphone for TV.
The microphone?
Yeah, so just grab one of those, you can bring it up with you.
Bring it right up.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Great. Uh, I, this is the report. I, I promise at this late hour, I, I don't plan on briefing the, all of this report to you. I've got a, kind of a summary brief, uh, that hits the bottom lines, and then some key points that I hope you'll take away from, uh, from the study. I know you've gotten a copy of this within the last few days. I'm not sure exactly when, but last few days. Thanks for the opportunity for us to report. Joe, next slide, please. May 2014 Town Meeting established the study, funded $35,000. The issue was to determine the spatial needs of four departments: DPW, Consolidated Facilities, Parks and Rec, and Cemetery. Cemetery opted out, and the Board did that. I talked at the time to the Town Moderator, and Katie then, was then Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the operation of the cemetery is dramatically different than the other three departments. The other three departments hit every part of town, west one day, east the next day, and in-between, uh, that next afternoon. Cemetery operates within the confines. If you were to have Cemetery employees, for example, report to the DPW yard and pick up their equipment there, load a trailer, move it over to the cemetery, do their work, odds are you'd lose 30 to 60 minutes of work every day, which, you know, would be significant and non-productive, and frankly, silly, I guess might be, that, might be the right word. So, we're talking about really the spatial needs of the three departments. Joe? Here's the folks on the committee. Marie Theodad is with us today, uh, also a committee member. And we had assistance from the, uh, three staff, uh, from the three departments. Tom McCarthy on the, uh, from the Commission, from the Parks Commission. All three of those folks were very helpful to us, and, and very helpful to the consultant. Next, please. Okay, I, I call your attention to two numbers on this. Don't worry about the detail, unless you'd like to look at it, but two numbers. Here's what we've got, 37,000 square feet. Here's what industry standards say we should have. Those industry standards, again, were at approximately 50% of the industry standard, and it's impossible to compare towns, because no two towns are exactly alike, you know, with exactly the same equipment. But Weston and Sampson, our consultant, has worked on about 100 various municipal facilities across the Commonwealth over the years. And they looked at the last five to 10 years, and the fact is, that 72,492 square feet is the low end of towns that we can call comparable to us. So, it's not plush, it's not excessive by any stretch. Joe? Thank you. Here's what drives the need. Obviously, Town Meeting told us to do a spatial needs assessment, so we did that. But what, why are we worried about facilities at the DPW yard? They're grossly undersized, they're scattered. Uh, I, I was kind up there at the top when I said they're in marginal to very poor condition. I will tell you, the committee went through it, and to say, Marie, appalled, disappointed, sad, uh, that's really what it is. Tom, I know you've been there.
I've been there.
Katie, I know we talked about it. Have you seen it also? Yeah, okay.
Not recently, about a few years ago.
I, I would just ask each of you, um, before you make any decision on what you're going to do about the DPW, and that's, uh, you know, your, your purview, you've got to go see that place. In the interest of time, I didn't bring you any pictures. But also, I'll be honest with you, I think the pictures show it nicer than what it is. The place is horrible, and there's, there's hardly anything about it that's halfway decent. ADA compliant, restroom's not compliant, we've got issues on public accessibility and safety, poor ventilation, inadequate lighting. You're talking a couple buildings built almost 100 years ago, several in the 1930s, so that's, what, what would you expect in that, you know, again, given those kinds of standards? Uh, we've got the union grievance, which we've started to address. Another big issue was the loss of 1,500 square feet of coverage storage this last winter, with the collapse of the, uh, uh, structure, and the structure being deemed unsafe for, you know, for per- personnel to, to use. Joe? Outdoor storage, I really want to stress that. A, a big piece of the required facilities versus the existing facilities is covered storage. Why do you want covered storage? Talk just a little bit about that. About 50% of the equipment owned by those three departments is stored outdoors. You know the harshness of the climate, there's, there's little to talk about that. Uh, we, we experience it enough. Uh, the, the second issue is, we have an old fleet. If you look at a truck life, a pickup truck, or a simple stake and platform truck, uh, the economic life of that truck's considered to be 10 years. We're replacing them at 15 to 20 years. That, that's a capital problem for the town, I understand that. But that's the reality. You've got old clunkers that are in those harsh weather conditions and not in decent storage. Heavy equipment life is considered to be about 15 years. Again, that varies depending on the usage, but we're replacing them in 20 to 25 years. So, again, clunkers. That says Waltham Dump Truck Example, I apologize, that's my error, it should be Wayland. There is a documented case in Wayland about the impact of outdoor storage on service life of equipment or trucks. Wayland bought three dump trucks, and had storage for one of them inside. Uh, the crews kept the one stored inside all the time, the other two outside. Long story short, when they started having trouble with the dump trucks, they got rid of two dump trucks, the ones that were stored outside. Auction wouldn't accept them, because they were in such bad shape, so they were sold for scrap. The one that was stored inside served three more years and was sold at auction with some return to the town. Now, you know, there's no precise formula which says you'll get three more years, or two more years, or five, because it obviously depends on, on the usage and the, uh, you know, how bad the winters in a row are going to be, and those kinds of things. But the simple fact is, tires, hydraulic systems, steel, all take one heck of a beating from being stored outdoors. Joe? Here's the criteria we issued to the consultant from the committee. They're going to stay on that site, that we, we thought was a given. Uh, we thought the safety issue was pretty important. You got to sep- separate the facilities such that the public can come in there without fear of being run over by a big truck, uh, which, uh, again, is a concern to all of us. And then lastly, because we knew that this was going to be an expensive undertaking, utilize existing buildings as much as possible. Ideally, you'd like to start with a clean sheet of paper, you know, tuck it off in one little corner and all that, but given the realities of life, using existing buildings seemed like the only way to go. And we took the liberty of giving, uh, the consultant that guidance. Joe? Uh, we looked at 14 conceptual alternatives, and we selected, uh, what, what is labeled in your report, Scheme 3C, it's the last of those pullouts, as what we believe is the optimum alternative, in many ways, because the, the price is the least, and it maximizes the use of existing facilities. And I'll, I'll cover those facilities in a minute. Let's just go to the next slide, Joe, and... This, this is the yard, and just a couple of highlights. When you see the X's here, that's the reuse of facilities. This gets reused for employee facilities. Uh, this is the existing garage that gets reused as admin space, and this is stored space that gets used, again, for storage, and tied to the indoor storage of, of the major vehicles and pieces of equipment. You, you see the, uh, the, the covered storage, again, um, covered parking. Uh, we add a wash rack, which doesn't exist, and, and that one, this one would be compliant with, uh, today's laws. Probably the other thing that stays is the, um, fuel facility. That is compliant with today's, uh, rules on environmental laws and, and rules. So, that, Joe, next?
Previous slide or the next one?
No, the next one, please, I'm sorry. Uh, we looked at, uh, this was, we, we don't know how any of this is going to come about, but we thought we had to look at at least a couple of schemes, so we could present something to you. Single contract takes 28 months to do what we showed you on that previous slide, and the price tag is $27 million. We looked at three separate contracts. It takes 52 months to do that. If, if you start this one at the end of this one, and, and so on, it could take longer than that, obviously. If it takes longer, this number goes up, without question. But you can see the difference between this and this, just in timing and doing, uh, different phases. You, you've got to, even in this, you've got some phasing, because you've got to have the, um, vehicle maintenance facility, new one, done, so you can close the old one out and make it into admin space, and, you know, and, and so on, as you, as you go along. That, that's kind of it. The funding and decisions for this are out of my hands. I, my expectation is that, um, we would be expected to brief Town Meeting, uh, since Town Meeting charged us with doing that, is that a correct assumption on your part?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I would seek some guidance from you, it doesn't need to be right now, but, but maybe just afterwards, as to how much detail I want to go into in Town Meeting. Is this enough detail, or, or would Town Meeting need to feel like they needed to have, you know, have more detail than they did here? And we'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Joe Lynch is here, of course, Bill Ritchie's here, uh, our advisors, and, and we've got Jeff Alberti from Weston Sampson, who did the study and whose experience hits most of those 100 facilities across the Commonwealth.
That's certainly enlightening in terms of the number. I mean, it, it's interesting. I almost got lynched at Town Meeting, uh, last year, when I, uh, when I presented my, uh, my, my plan to kind of smooth out the, you know, kind of keep what we've been, um, our, our, our debt, um, what do you call it? The, um, the, the debt explosion we have right now, you know, kind of keep that going, bank it, and, and I was using, I, I think, 50 million in my model. So, I mean, that 26 million kind of fits in when you figure the fire stations, I, I have no idea what they're going to commit at, but I... I have no idea what they're gonna commit after, but I figure something in that range.
It was good to use fifty.
But like I said, I almost got lynched when I did it. But, yeah, and I think that model even was probably five, four or five years out before you'd even be able to tap that money to...
Well, the reality is, is that the, the longer this goes, the we fix this problem, we, we've got older, crankier equipment, if you will. Clunkier, crankier, uh, equipment, higher maintenance costs. We're not, we're not tracking that, it would take a great deal of effort to track that, but the reality is, I don't know, is anybody here own a fifteen-year-old pickup truck that they're driving around in? I don't think so. There's a reason for that now, that we're not doing that. We're, we're paying a lot of money on the other side, and, and again, it would be difficult to track each dollar and cent, but the reality is, it is costing us. The, the other way it's costing us is in the deterioration of that equipment and in response times. Instead of being able to pull equipment out, for example, with a water main break, pull it out of a garage and get over there and repor that water main, we might spend a half an hour cleaning snow off of it so that we can get a piece of equipment going and maybe get the diesel engine started because of the harsh temperatures and harsh conditions. That's a reality that the DPW faces every day in trying to do his job.
Yeah, I, I think you guys put together a great report. I, I read through it and, and, you know, a, a few years back, I worked in the town of Westwood where they went through a total overhaul in their DPW facility, and it's, it's paid incredible dividends, you know, you know, having worked in government for a number of years, looking at efficiencies, you know, taxpayers often complain about not getting services. Well, when you see a number like this, you say, geez, how could we ever do that? Well, you're talking about long-term efficiencies, and, you know, you get better results when you invest in the future for something that is something that, that really is critical. I think, you know, I think, and I, and I worked in Boston and, and I worked for Tom Manino, and we talked about basic city service. He had a, a big approval rate because people were happy that streets were clean, people were happy that snow removal was great, people were happy that trash is collected on time. Those are the things you pay taxes for, and so if you don't invest in the future with a, a good facility, with good equipment, that can actually be maintained to save money long-term, then I think you're in trouble. So, you know, this is, this is excellent, obviously, it's a, it's a huge number and one that we'll, we'll often deliberate, but, but I think it's a great start for a great discussion.
Thank you.
Stan, you, you raised a point that I hadn't really considered before, that, that, you know, part of our DPW facility is water and sewer, water and sewer enterprise. Can, so I would assume part of that capital project would be a water and sewer capital project?
Yeah. Hold this aside.
Yeah, as far as real estate and, and equipment assets, it's probably a little bit different than the actual operation, which is typically probably thirty percent water, thirty percent sewer, and thirty-five percent balance, being the general public works and then, then the miscellaneous work. Equipment assets in, in the actual facility footprint is probably closer to twenty percent water, twenty percent sewer, and so, which would be legitimately assigned as a, as an indirect cost to, to the water and sewer enterprises. I think it's important to point out too, that, you know, these...
I guess that's a question, you know, can, can it be an, well, would it be an indirect cost, or could it be a, and I guess that's a question for another day, could it be a, a shared capital project, so a direct, so that part of the debt is carried by the water and sewer enterprise?
Uh, debt service is a direct, is a direct cost. Yeah, debt service is a direct cost.
Right, so, so could you bifurcate this project into, into two pieces, one being the water and sewer enterprise fund and the other being general government? And the reason I'm saying that is, is just, you know, then you're talking a smaller debt exclusion, you know, obviously, the, the effect of the taxpayers are saying, they either pay it through a water and sewer rate, or they pay it through, through real estate tax, but, but certainly, it makes it a little easier to, to get your head around it and to, to move it through Town Meeting and everything.
There's one other issue that we, you know, we talk about the equipment and the condition of the equipment. I have a hard time believing that this doesn't affect employee morale strongly.
Yeah.
And, and again, that won't get any better over time, and, and that's not a good thing for your, your point about the kind of services that we get.
I have a question. Can we go back, Joe, to the slide that shows the proposal? Yes. Stan, one of the things that we wanted the committee to, the big, the big task for the committee, aside from the financial issues and what the cost of all this would be, would be figure out what's the best layout for this site, and this is the proposal you've put forward. The materials you sent us have a number of other options. Could you just maybe speak a little bit about how you settled on this design rather than some of the other designs, what, in terms of where things are placed, efficiency at the yard, use by other departments? What led you to this design as opposed to the seven, eight, or ten other designs?
Fourteen, really, thirteen others, I guess.
Yeah, that's a big number.
Besides this one. I, I'll make a couple of comments, and I'll ask Joe or Jeff to chime in after I'm done, just to make sure we completely answer your question. You know, we tried to get a, a couple of things. Maximize the use of existing facilities. If we've got a decent structure, let's not redo that. That gives you some pluses, but it gives you some minuses, because again, if you started with a clean sheet of paper, it probably wouldn't be laid out quite this way. Then we looked at traffic flow, and we wanted a way for vehicles to come in, get right to indoor storage and parking here, and then be able to come out, fuel, and, and, you know, be able to do that. So, so that flow was important. This was an attempt to keep employee vehicles and public vehicles away from all of this, for safety reasons, principally, safety of the public, mostly. With that, again, I guess the, you know, the reuse did constrain us. I might also point out that all the notion here is that a piece of this is landscaping to shield it from the abutters, and you all have heard many of the concerns and complaints of the abutters, valid concerns and complaints. So, with that, Joe? Jeff, you wanna add anything to what I just said?
Pull your chair over. Yeah, I, I think you hit the nail right on the head as far as the driving factor was looking at the, the, the value of the existing facilities and, and try not to be wasteful, but we also understand the cliche that whenever you try to do a remodeling project versus new, it, sometimes it drives the cost up. So, do we have a perfect circulation? Do we have a perfect campus layout or, as a single facility or a larger, better positioned facility would be? No, there were better options with, with greater expense that, that were considered and ruled out. We also recognized, if you look at the sketch that's in front of you, that, that magenta purplish color, L-shaped building with the X in it, that one right there, Stan, thank you, is a building that through prior capital plans has, has addressed the union grievance issue, and we're about to sink four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment into rehabilitating that, that facility. In, in essence, it will be a rehabilitated new building soon, so it's gotta be something we save. The next magenta building, the bigger X, that is the existing mechanic's garage, central maintenance garage, if you will. It is highly inadequate for the existing, for example, the fire truck doesn't even fit in it to, to be maintained, but, as well as confinement with, with operations of, of other equipment that we have. But it's a rock-solid building, it's a high building, converting, you know, taking that rock-solid masonry construction and, and given its height, introduce either a mezzanine or a second story into it and make it, you know, make it the office space for, for admin, for, for the DPW, the, the records retention area, and consolidate facilities, it, it is a great use for that building, and, and, and it results in cost savings for not having to demolish it and replace it with new. But the next building is the, is the yellowish building with the X in it, that one there. That's a pre-engineered metal building now. It's, it was built in the, in the seventies. It's a, it's a high-span, class-span building, pre-engineered metal building. The skin on it, like typical of those buildings in, in the class of use, it needs to be replaced, but structurally it's sound, it allows through flow of traffic, it's, it's a good building, otherwise, again, it would be somewhat wasteful to demolish it. So, give, recognizing that in the, in the, at the committee level, and the committee giving the direction to the, to the consultant, we looked at clean slate all the way down to this in, in recognizing that, you know, salvation of the buildings was something that seemed to be cost-effective and, and still meant the, the flow of separating operational traffic from civilian traffic.
Jeff?
I'd just add briefly on a couple of items. We do maintain a counterclockwise circulation pattern on the site for the large vehicles. These vehicles will have equipment in tow, so as they enter and exit out, it gives the drivers on the left-hand side better visibility, so the circulation for the larger equipment was key. And you also notice that we've created a courtyard for where the operations, where you will have some yard operations, and that courtyard, we use the buildings to actually shield that operation from the abutters and from the main roadway, so it's a, it's a nice function to use the building to act as a shield for some of those operations. And then, in the bottom right-hand side, this is generally the area where you're gonna have your occupied spaces, most of where all your staff is gonna be reporting, and then the upper-left portion of the lighter-colored areas, that's where your vehicle and equipment is. So, two distinct atmospheres with regard to storing equipment indoors and having people inside, and so this is a nice separation of those two environments and helps prevent any spreading of fumes between the buildings, so it's a nice feature as well.
And you're still contemplating the recycling area in the current location?
Correct.
But if you recognize the demolition of the buildings that are up there creates the landscape area, but it also creates greater footprint area for greater efficiency in how that recycle area works, and also, though we didn't get to the level of looking at it, it takes advantage, it has potential to take advantage of the terrain difference, the change in elevation, to perhaps do some gravity handling of materials where people can drop it street level and, and then push it into containers off the side. So, you know, there, there are some advantages of using the land area that, that gets freed up by demolishing those buildings up there, but we would still keep it on site.
Yes. Thank you.
Great.
I think one thing I do wanna underscore is, this is a high-altitude, thirty-thousand-foot master plan type of flyover. These numbers aren't precise. We would go to construction today. There's contingencies in there. So, part of the phasing in the mindset that we should be looking at is, you know, in the decision-making is, you know, maybe the next step is to, is to move in conceptual design development of the preferred alternative, come out and do some soils explorations, look at the, do some surveying, get some of the permitting and legal issues understood, and move it along that way, and as you do that, some of those contingencies numbers can be whittled down as it becomes more known of what you're dealing with. So, there, there's ways that you can even have pre-phase progress in, in, in the process. The report doesn't go into that kind of detail, which it truly doesn't matter.
Perhaps we should consider offering a proposal to you all to consider for putting forward to Town Meeting in May, funding, you know, obviously, I'm not trying to make a decision for you. I'd like to, but, but perhaps we should put the wording and, and price something that would make sense to, to move along, to get that greater detail and more certainty with regard to the, to everything we're talking about. Would that make sense?
I think it does, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, at least, like I said, the first step is, is, you know, present, you know, do what the committee was chartered to do and, and present, present the plan, but yeah, we should come up with a, with some kind of a thought as, as to what's the next step and, and stop, you know, keep moving this thing forward.
Yeah, I think so. Stan, in answer to your question, I think the presentation that you've given us would be good to give at Town Meeting. I, I don't know that you'd, it would hurt maybe to add the photos, but as you said, if the photos really don't do justice to the situation...
I'll be honest with you...
Maybe you're better off describing it.
They, they don't look bad enough to me. Well, I, I mean, I see it physically, and the, I don't know, the photographs to me kinda gloss it up. Maybe, maybe I need to go out there and take another look, Joe, we need to get a camera.
There's, there's a certain aspect of the smell of rotting wood...
Yeah.
...that you don't pick up in a photograph.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we owe thanks to the committee and, and also to Tom for his creative idea that went to Town Meeting in May, but for the benefit of the viewers who are, who are watching, who may not know Stan, we have a great chairman for this committee in Stan, who's retired general with the, if I get this wrong, Stan, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So, when the moderator appointed this committee, our board made some recommendations, and Stan was our, our top choice, and we asked the moderator to consider appointing him as chair, and I think we made the right, the right choice because...
Absolutely.
Who better than a retired general to help decide what the logistics at this site should be? So, Stan, to you, to Marie who's here tonight, to all the other members of your committee, thank you very much for all of your work. And as one member of the board, I would like to thank our chair for putting forward the debt service article, I don't even know what the right way to describe this, on the debt exclusion article that you put forward in May. That was a creative idea that Tom had, and sometimes, you know, we get a lot of rocks thrown at us, that things aren't moving quickly enough or something's not working right. We've had lots of issues tonight that we're dealing with. This is one that's a long-term project, but thanks to Tom's creative financial idea and the hard work, Stan, of you and your committee, and with the help of Joe and his, his team, I think we're, we're at the beginning stages of trying to move something along here that's long overdue and probably should have been addressed decades ago, but...
Yeah.
We're at least on it, we're on it right now, and we're, it's not gonna be solved overnight, but we're taking the right steps to, to move it along, thanks to, I think, to both.
Thank you.
Your committee and to Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eleven on the agenda is a conference with Ian Cook of the Nippon River Watershed Association on a grant application.
Do I have any materials for this? Materials?
Yeah, there are.
I didn't see it earlier. Okay.
Hi, my name's Ian Cook. I'm the executive director of the Nippon River Watershed Association, and I am here to ask for your blessing to submit a grant proposal on the town's behalf. We have been talking with John and Joe over at the DPW about this for a few weeks, and basically, the application we wanna put in would be submitted to something called the Coastal Pollution Remediation Grant Program, which is run by the Office Coastal Zone Management. As you might imagine, it's aimed at pollution. In this case, we're talking particularly about stormwater runoff pollution associated with roadways. This is kind of the, the forte of this particular grant program. And the, what we would like to do with this funding is spend some time doing some water quality monitoring and assessment of stormwater pollution along Unquitty Brook, which is one of the tributaries of the Nippon River in Milton. Unquitty Brook starts actually as a tiny little trickle behind the hospital and kinda...
Sew station.
Sneaks back behind Milton Academy, makes its way through the cemetery, under Brook Road, down Adam Street, and actually ends up down by East Squanum Street where it comes out into the marsh and actually becomes Gulliver's Creek in the saltwater portion of it. It's a significant brook from our point of view as a conservation group because it's an area where we have spawning of rainbow smelt, which are an anadromous fish that lives out in the ocean, comes upstream to spawn. There's really two places in the Nippon River Watershed where they spawn this tiny little creek, and then over on the main stem, just below the, the Baker Dam. It's an area where the town has actually made a fair amount of progress in improving water quality over the years. The upgrades to the Libby Road pump station a few years ago were a big benefit to the system, as well as a few other sewer-related problems that have been found and fixed over the years. But our water quality monitoring data shows that this stream is still a significant problem area within the town. It has high bacteria levels, high sedimentation of silt and dirt getting into the stream, which is particularly a problem for the fish, as well as issues with nutrient pollution, fertilizer runoff. So, the focus of the grant would be to basically try to do some surveys of the brook, see if we can figure out where the problems are coming from, do some very preliminary work to try to identify some possible areas to improve the situation and, and see where things go from there. If the grant application is successful, the work would happen between January and June thirtieth of 2015. The town would actually be the, excuse me, twenty sixteen. That'd be pretty impressive if we did it retroactively. The town would be the grantee, most of the work would actually be done by the Watershed Association. The total amount of the project cost would be about twenty-five thousand dollars, of which we're proposing that about twelve-hundred dollars would be in the form of in-kind staff time on the part of the DPW, which would be about... which would be about 20 hours of staff time over the six-month grant. The Watershed Association would put up $5,000 to cover the cost of the lab work, and then the grant itself would cover about $19,000. So that all works out to about 25. And I don't know if you have questions or comments. We do have, the one thing I will tell you is, there was a little summary of this that went around in your packet in advance. There is a, I believe they call it a commitment letter that they would want to have from the town, and I've taken the liberty of putting together a sample of what that would look like for this grant proposal that I can leave with you as well.
So, logistically, the reason why I'm sitting here is that under the underwriting requirements of this grant under Coastal Zone Management is, public entities, you know, state governments and local governments have to be the applicant. The Watershed Associations cannot be. So, you know, we're principally the lead applicant, and the association's carrying out the work for us. This is yet again, another partnership that we've fostered over the past 10 or 15 years, you know, solidly, in promoting our stormwater initiatives, which is something we want to continue to do here. The in-kind services is really mostly, you know, technical research with regards to the discharge points of those storm systems and maybe some correlation to sewage data, depending on the results we find. So it's something, it doesn't result in any particular concern for, you know, mandate in the future for us in doing things. It just helps us study and better understand. Good portion of this watershed, good portion of this watershed is runoff coming from the expressway itself, which picks up the expressway runoff as well as Granite Avenue.
As it gets near the Gulliver Creek part of it.
Right, and it connects down in, at Squanum Street, down near California. So it's a great area, it's a vulnerable area, it's a great program to help us address it and, you know, something we support. Last piece of logistics is the grant application is due this Friday, the 4th. So the draft letterhead is signed by Anne Marie, so I think if this board were to take a vote to authorize a signatory on behalf of the town, it would probably be Michael as the designee, because we have to have this in, you know, paperwork complete. We'll get that to you tomorrow, and then you can submit it on Friday.
And so, just for clarification, it's not the application, you're looking for us to support the commitment letter?
Commitment letter and the application, they're both due, right?
They're both due, and really, I think the thing that the board needs to sign off on is this commitment letter, which basically just says, yes, we would like to do this, we understand that there's a match commitment, and this is how we expect to meet it, and we understand that the work has to be done by June 30th, 2016. Thank you very much, is basically what it says.
So it's a competitive grant?
Yep.
So it'll go through a review process. When an award is made, it would culminate in the award contract with the community, and at that point, we'll be coming back and looking for an additional vote to accept the grant monies, at which point we will vote the terms of the contract when that happens. And we're confident it will happen.
Yes.
We've been pretty successful in getting grants in the past. To Ian's hard work.
I mean, it certainly seems like a worthwhile.
It does.
So, we do have a motion here to...
I'll make a motion to approve an application for a coastal pollutant remediation grant and authorize the town administrator to sign and execute any pertinent documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Friendly amendment, do we change town administrators to assistant town?
Assistant town administrator.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have, item 12 is a discussion of, well, why don't we get item 13 out of the way first, because that's real quick, Ian, just get it over with, which is the approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Pius X.
I'll move that we approve a one-day liquor license for St. Pius X for a fundraiser to be held on Saturday, September 19th, 2015, at 101 Walcott Road from 6:30 to 11:00 p.m.
And I'll second that.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, item 12 is a discussion of the Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives, and we have a draft of those goals and objectives. I have read through it, I think they're all great. Does anybody want to comment, or how do we want to...
I guess this is just one question really raised by Anne Marie, and David, this was from your list. So, on the first one, which is the transition to the strong town administrator, the fourth bullet point, there's a sub-bullet point under it. It says, "Town administrator to reestablish monthly department meetings and bi-monthly working group meetings to enhance internal communication for various reasons." And then it says, "An example would be a human service function group consisting of library, parks, health, and COA." So when this got circulated, Anne Marie called me and said, "Well, we've, you know, for a period of time, we didn't have department meetings. We've reinstated those." And she did mention the core team meetings, but it sounds like you're, so her question really was whether we should delete this one or revise it, but it's, to both of us, it sounds like you might be talking about something a little different than just the core team meeting.
What I was mentioning, and the core team meetings are great, but what I was looking to do is, if, you know, in our transition to a strong town administrator, we'd be looking at consolidating in some capacity and trying to maximize what we have. And that's one of the examples, and one of the examples where I worked in my past, where it was, it was very efficient. You know, it's a human service group where they, it's to non-duplicate activities and to share information on a regular basis. I think taxpayers often see with these groups, library, parks, health, and the Council on Aging, a lot of benefit. And I think that it enables us to have a working relationship with department heads who talk on a regular basis to basically maximize all that we do and also uncover what we don't do, you know, to ensure that we're doing it for whether it be seniors, whether it be young children, whether it be students who go to the library, and also various health initiatives. So it's just another option to discuss.
You're right, and all those, all those human services are kind of interrelated in one respect or another, so that there probably are ways to...
Should we, should we take out, have worded TA to old monthly by, or, yeah, or established by monthly working group meetings, and just take out reestablish monthly department meetings?
That makes sense to me.
Sounds like that might be something different than...
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And the rest of those are all things we've talked about, and I totally agree with it.
So how is this going to work? These are the board's goals. We'll eventually need to talk with the town administrator when she's back at some point about her goals for the year.
Yes.
And maybe distilling this down, or formulating goals for off of this list?
Yeah, and basically, you know, these are our goals, but in order to implement our goals, it's going to take the cooperation of the town administrator and department heads and everybody else.
I think, I think by working with both hers and ours, creating an action plan as we do get into this transition of a strong town administrator, because a lot of that will take shape, you know, naturally, I think, by virtue of some of these items.
I totally agree.
I think it's pretty clear that, and I think we all agree, that we want to see basic town services, increased constituent services, you know, people have a better connect to government. And I think that, you know, we all share some of these same goals, and I think that our town administrator, Anne Marie, does as well, and I think she's been working really hard internally with her staff, to a lot of success, to great success, on implementation. And I think that over some time, you know, I know our goal is to continue to meet with neighborhood associations and really create some sort of a better line of communication so that residents do get information clearer and quicker.
Absolutely. Yes, I think you're right. I think the next, the next step would be to get the town administrator's goals and see to what extent those dovetail with our goals and objectives, and then, you know, it'll be developed, I mean, some of these aren't one-year.
No, yeah.
But, but, yeah, develop an implementation plan to, you know, bring it to the next, next level.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, some of these are going to take a few years. But, I mean, when I look down at it, at a social media policy or a media policy, some of those things can be done right away.
Could be done right away, yeah.
You know, so some of these things, I think if you look at it and prioritize it, you know, in working with the town administrator, we could probably come up with an action plan and a reasonable plan on what could be done on three months, six months, nine months, 12 months.
Yes.
What could be done over the next couple of years.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Okay, that being said, let's see, town administrator's report, our town administrator's not here today, does our assistant town administrator have a report?
I just wanted to announce to the public, as information gets out there, that the Mass Department of Transportation will be holding a 25% design public hearing on the East Milton Deck project. It's going to be held on September 9th, which is a Wednesday night at 7 o'clock, right here at the Council on Aging. It's going to be an opportunity for the public to hear information on the proposed project, where things are at currently, and to express their views and comments on the proposal. A PowerPoint presentation will be available tomorrow on the town of Milton's website, which will provide some additional information on the project and the hearing, so people can feel free to visit that website tomorrow. We should have that up.
Okay. That being said, there's been a, kind of seen it out there, there may be a misconception as to whose project this actually is, and some requests that take certain actions on things that are really, at this point, out of our control. This is a state project. This 25% hearing is the state's 25% hearing. It's a federal grant, you know, with some state money in it as well. The town will get the benefit, but all the contracts will run through the state, most of the, you know, we have some, certainly some input in these, these meetings, but not really much more input than the regular citizens would have in these meetings. Follow the website, follow the PowerPoint, it's put on the website tomorrow. Will do. Okay, chairman's report, I really have nothing to report at this moment. Members' reports?
I don't have one tonight.
I don't have one either tonight.
Okay. Citizen speak response, there really was none tonight. Well, yet, one citizen speak. Future agenda items. Anything? None of the ones we certainly talked about.
The ones that we talked about tonight, obviously.
Yes.
Want to get those done.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to propose a motion then to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting to attend the meeting of the trustees of Governor Stoughton Fund and to return to open session in order to enter executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are now in a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and I'd like to invite town council up with Bill Clark, our planning director, to discuss the Polte Homes of New England Development. Actually, do you want to take a real quick recess, just bathroom break recess?
Sure.
Okay. Just going to take like a two-minute recess.
Need to notify the cable, the cable team?
Ah, yeah, you can notify them. On now. Okay, so basically, the purpose of this discussion tonight is to kind of let the public know basically what the process is from here with respect to Polte. It was supposed to be a 60-day due diligence period, wound up being more like a one-year due diligence period, but it has ended, and Polte is moving forward. So just to give everybody an idea of where the process goes from here, and somewhat specifically talking about the process of the 100-foot neighborhood buffer and the determination of that. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, John, just to kind of break us through that whole process and...
There are a couple of components to that. Now that the due diligence has stopped, the Polte needs to apply to the planning board for a special permit under the cluster bylaw. It'll be the first time the planning board has held a hearing on that issue, so it'll be making new ground, if you will. The, they have not filed yet. The special permit process will be a public hearing process before the planning board under the zoning bylaw. It'll be their job to determine whether the project proposed by Polte complies with the zoning bylaw. If they decide that it does, their option is to grant the permit according to the application as filed or to grant it with conditions. If they decide that it does not comply with the zoning bylaw, it depends upon the extent to which they decide that it doesn't comply. They could grant a special permit with conditions that, some of which address the bylaw and say, "With these changes, your proposal complies with the town's bylaw," or they could deny. Special permit process is geared more to approval than it is to denial. For example, in contrast, you have the variance process. Variance is by definition, and the statutes and the law are difficult to get because they have statutory standards that are sometimes difficult to meet. Special permits are more discretionary with the special permit granting authority. In this case, that's the planning board. Your Board of Appeals also has special permit granting authority, but not in this situation. So it is a public hearing process, it could be lengthy. The, at this point, it's difficult to predict how that will go. I anticipate it will be a very involved public hearing process for a number of reasons. As I said earlier, it's the first application under this bylaw. It's a very ambitious project, very important, very, as you remember from the time of the award of the contract, if you will, to Polte, it's understandably generated a lot of public interest, and so it should be a full and fair public hearing process. The issue of the, we have a separate legal issue of the 100-foot buffer, so-called. The proposal that was accepted by the then-Board of Selectmen has been referenced in the purchase and sale agreement between the parties. The process after the, you may recall it was a procurement process, several requests for proposals was put out, several entities responded to that proposal. The result of that was that the then-Board of Selectmen awarded the, accepted the proposal of Polte. Polte gave a couple of proposals. The Board of Selectmen accepted one of their proposals, they identified it as Plan C, yes. And there is a purchase and sale, and as the chairman noted, there was a due diligence period, which is not uncommon in a project of this magnitude.
Right.
As you also noted, in a recent letter dated July 20th, Polte informed the Board of Selectmen... Selectmen, or technically the Selectmen sitting as trustees under the will of Governor Stoughton, Polte informed the trustees that the due diligence period is over and that they intended to proceed with the process to purchase, while the next step to, for that process is to get a permit from, a special, apply for a special permit from the Board of Appeals. I should mention briefly, just for the public's benefit, that before we got to this stage, because the subject property is the so-called Governor Stoughton property, is held by the Selectmen as, it's, it was given to the Town of Milton for the benefit of the poor of Milton by former Governor William Stoughton. That land, in effect, is held by the town in trust for that purpose, and you, the Board of Selectmen, are the trustees for that.
Right.
So, in order for this process to begin and in order for the agreement to be signed, two approvals were necessary. One was from the Attorney General of the Commonwealth. The Attorney General's Public Charities Division, and if you will, overlooks, oversees public charities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This land, in effect, is a public charity because it's held by the town in trust, as I mentioned, under that will from 1701. The second approval that was necessary was approval from the Norfolk County Probate Court, because I mentioned that the land was given to the Town of Milton to hold in trust for the benefit of the poor of Milton. Well, to allow this project to go forward would, in effect, deviate from the terms of that will, and there's a legal process with the Latin name Cypre, two words, C-Y-P-R-E-S. What that means is a deviation from the will. And the legal process to accomplish that is to get approval from either the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court or the local probate court. We chose to go to the local probate court for that. It was not an easy process, understandably, there are a lot of issues to hammer out. The Attorney General asked for, demanded, I guess, or asked for, depending on your point of view, a number of conditions because of, among other things, questions about the viability of the project and the ability of Polte to develop it. That took longer than anyone anticipated, it's just the way it went. They considered it to be an important process, although, project that required that level of scrutiny. Those two approvals were, were obtained, then the purchase and sale agreement was entered into that I mentioned earlier, and that purchase and sale agreement did have the due diligence period, that's expired, and as you mentioned earlier, in a July 20, 2015 letter, Polte informed you as trustees, "We're ready to go, we'll start the process." That will be the special permit process, I alluded to earlier. The special permit by statute is, in essence, a process by which a property owner can obtain approval to do something that's not permitted as of right. Well, this development, proposed development, is under a bylaw that's not a matter of right, it's a special permit. And as I mentioned earlier, it's a discretionary approval, the Planning Board doesn't have to grant it, but it is a discretionary process, but it, it's generally intended that if you can satisfy the zoning bylaw, you generally get either approval or approval with conditions, but it's not required. And being a special permit, a Planning Board, a special permit granting authority can deny a request as long as it's a reasonable denial. So, that's the legal process they have to follow. As you mentioned, there was that, there is a separate issue, which is, an issue that has arisen under the purchase and sale agreement. The proposal that the then Select, the then trustees accepted by Polte is the so-called Plan C that the chairman referred to earlier, that Plan C was, on the assumption that the acreage is 34 acres, they would develop 30 of those 34 acres, and the other four acres would be retained by the Town of Milton. That's the proposal the trustees accepted, rather than, for example, a proposal to develop both lots. We, the Town of Milton, retain the four lots. So, to say it another way, they are developing most, but not all, of the Governor Stoughton property. That proposal, that development proposal for the 30 acres of land was to build 20, to develop 23 lots on the 30-acre parcel using the cluster zoning bylaw that I referred to earlier. And I'll just read a couple of sentences from that. "The homes will be designed utilizing classic New England architecture to complement the historic nature of the property. The homes will be constructed using state-of-the-art construction techniques and materials." The next sentence is the issue the chairman referred to earlier. "We will maintain 100-foot buffers at a minimum from existing residential neighborhoods." And what I ought to say, "We will create a plan that is sensitive to the immediate environment and strives to maximize open space while respecting the natural topography, wetlands, and overall vegetation of the site." That issue has created some concern, both among the public and among Polte. And in essence, the issue is this, what is meant by the words "100-foot buffers at a minimum from existing residential neighborhoods"? The purchase and sale agreement doesn't define that term. There is no memo or site agreement or any written document that tells us what that meant. At this point, the status of that issue is that the developer, the proposed developer, Polte, is saying, let me back up a second. What I should add to that is, with their proposal, Polte submitted a plan, it wasn't a fully served by plan, it was more in the nature of a sketch plan, that showed the proposed development. It was small scale on a letter-sized piece of paper, so for layman like us, the detail is hard to, I believe it's 100-foot scale, or 1 inch is 100-foot. It's a small drawing, in other words. But their, their explanation of what they meant by their proposal was, that wording that I just read, the 100-foot buffers, plus the plan, that does not have dimensions on it, but has a scale, although it's a small drawing. They say, "What we meant by that was, we would separate the residential, the homes on the lots, the homes that we build on the Governor Stoughton property, from homes budding on countryside lane by 100 feet." The counterposition to that is that buffer is usually often meant to mean separation from two properties, you know, 100-foot separation from the property line to the workplace development, not, say it another way, not house to house, but lot line to house.
Right.
So, the counterposition to that would be, what that should mean is, the 100-foot buffer should be 100-foot separation, if you will, from the property lines that divide the new homes from the countryside lane home. That property line, and 100-foot should go from that property line to the houses. So, as of now, there's no agreement on that issue. But it was addressed in a couple of contexts, including at a public meeting that you, the chairman, called with neighborhood representatives. It wasn't a board meeting, it was you. And it was discussed at length, and a good faith discussion, a Polte representative was there, you were there on behalf of the trustees, and I think it was clear from then, and the status is still, that there's not a clear agreement between the trustees and the developer, the Polte, as to what that means.
I guess we have a bunch of things, I mean, you're right, there was not a clear understanding between the, I guess to back up a little bit, when we crafted the purchase and sale agreement, I was the only one currently on the board that, you know, was there at the time. There was, there was very little discussion, I mean, the 100-foot neighborhood buffer was clearly in there, it was incorporated, you can read it, it's, you know, in one of the addendums on page, it's, page 16 of 24, it's item 10, and it's in there. But there was never a lot of discussion about it, it just kind of got in there, we all said, "Well, what's the problem? That's what we want," you know, but I'm not sure anybody ever, ever actually focused on what 100-foot meant. But nonetheless, it's in there, and, and you are correct that I don't think there's consensus among the Selectmen or the trustees as to what it means at this point. And certainly, there was no consensus with the neighbors on countryside or, or any of the other abutters. So, so we had a disagreement. We, we did ask Polte to reach out and talk to the neighbors, they said there, there would be a time to do that, but this was not the time, that they were still in negotiations, and the due diligence period, and, you know, the, the time would be when they actually went for the special permit process, that would be the time. So, in the interim, I had some discussions, and, and I wanted to make it more, I didn't want to have a, another giant meeting with 30 or 40 people there, I wanted to have discussions one-on-one with the directly affected people. So, I did sit down with Polte and ask them, "Well, if you were gonna mitigate this, what, you know, what would you do?" And I will certainly bring it to those abutters, and I will listen to their comments, and, and that's what I did. You know, Polte had put forth, you know, they, they would basically build a green wall, a vegetated wall, to separate the countryside properties from the Governor Stoughton properties. That wall would be, I believe, 10 feet thick. They would also, you know, not, not build within another, to make it basically 15 feet in total. They indicated what could and could not be built on the properties, what they consider a structure, so there would be no big buildings, there would be no additions that would be within 100 feet of the house behind them, and the size of any auxiliary structures like sheds or playgrounds and that kind of thing. So, we did present that to the neighbors, the, the countryside neighbors that would sit down with us, only two of which did. And we still could get no consensus. So, we basically went back to Polte and said, "There is no consensus, Polte made the decision to go forward." So, that's kind of where we're at right now. And the purchase and sale agreement, you can go through the rest of that, does have very explicit directions as to who's responsible from here, and, and it's not the trustees. The responsibility lies, lies with actually the building commissioner in terms of determining those four items in the addendum as to who, as to, does their plan meet those restrictions or not? And it, the decision clearly rests with him.
Yes, the, the four conditions you're referring to are the ones I read earlier.
Yes.
And the, by the way, I will add, I was town council then, when this was, process was starting, and I participated in the negotiations, and you're correct that this issue of the 100-foot buffer was not a issue that was discussed much. There were a lot of other issues, both purely legal, semi-legal, whatever, you know, political, there were, Attorney General, I mentioned all that, there were a lot of other issues that dominated the trustees' time, and for whatever reason, this wasn't really a topic of a lot of discussions, but here we are today. The way, the agreement that was agreed to, the, the provision of the purchase and sale agreement says, "The buyer shall submit to the building commission, Milton Building Commissioner for review. The buyer's plans would show the design and architectural style of the buildings to be constructed on the premises." And then there's a time period in which he is to respond. They did that, and the building commissioner, Mr. Parndeck, informed them by letter on December 3rd, 2014. "I do not agree that the plan demonstrates compliance with Part 10D of the agreement. The 100-foot buffer zone must be completely within the confines of the subject parcel. The plan seems to include private land of various abutters to achieve the 100-foot buffer zone." So, as of now, that's the status of the 100-foot.
So, so in essence, the building commissioner has thrown it back at Polte to, to say, "Please show me how this meets the restriction."
I should mention that at that meeting, this was obviously a big topic of discussion at the public meeting you convened, and a Polte representative was there, listened, and did say at the end, in essence, that "We agree that this is an issue, the time to discuss it is once we apply to the Planning Board, and we are open to discussing that with the public, with the neighbors." And then, to say it another way, their response to the request to meet with the neighbors at that time was that it's premature, we, what, what the Polte representative was telling you as chairman and the members of the public with that is, "Once we apply for our special permit in the public hearings, that, that's when we address these concerns." So, there's a hope that there'll, there will be a good faith attempt to resolve this issue during the, the Planning Board process. It's not technically a zoning issue, it's technically a contractual issue, but it's obviously part of the process, and...
Right, and, and clearly, in terms of those four restrictions, at, at least three of them are clearly within the purview also of the, the site review that the Planning Board would do anyways, in terms of the styling and all that other. It's questionable whether the 100-foot neighborhood buffer is within the purview of the Planning Board or not, but it certainly is within the purview of the building commissioner.
Yes.
By legal document.
And hopefully, that will be addressed during this process. I mean, you can compartmentalize, but the reality is, if this project is to go forward, it's gonna have to be addressed, because...
Right.
Given where we are right now.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think a logical approach to that would be okay, it may not be purely a zoning issue, but it's part of the process to get what we want, so let's try to work it out with the...
And, and that could be addressed, either by it being worked out between, between the trustees, between the abutters, the Planning Board?
Yes.
Or barring that, Polte can always litigate it if they so choose.
Hopefully not.
Not, yes. We pay enough legal fees anyways, much as we'd like to keep Murphy Heskey to me in the business.
But seriously, that's, that's hopefully not the way it'll go.
Right.
You want to have a, you know, a, a good relationship here with the project, obviously. I mean, it's the biggest project that any of us have seen during our lifetimes.
Right.
You'd like it to start off on the right foot, on a cooperative relationship, and at least from what they've said, they will be willing to approach it that way.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway, that's where it is now, that's where the 100-foot buffer zone is and issue is, and the special permit process should get going during the...
Right.
We should be getting some answers in the near future.
And, and at this point, is, is it your opinion that if, if the trustees were to take any action to try and do anything to negate this deal, that we'd be in violation of the purchase and sale agreement?
Well, I don't know that we'd be in viol, possibly. It would just create a controversy that I'm not sure would be productive at this point. It could lead to a lawsuit, or it could mean to, or, or, at the other, at the other end of the spectrum, it could mean that the developer packs his bags and leaves, neither of which is a particularly good result.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think it, I would recommend that just hold off on that and see how it unfolds.
Follow the course of the, the agreements that we have in place, and...
I'm not sure a lawsuit benefits anyone at this point, any kind of legal...
It never do.
So, ultimately, we're in a wait-and-see mode right now.
Yes, in my opinion, yes. And let's just be hopeful that...
Yep.
Some common ground here.
I mean, the tough thing about this is, you know, no matter what happens, I mean, if, if it doesn't come to fruition, then we're back to square one, unfortunately, and we'd go through... go through the whole RFP process again. Well, the one thing we know we can't do, if this falls through, is do nothing, because we'll have the Attorney General back on our doorstep saying that we're in violation of the terms of the will by not providing for the poor of Milton sufficiently. So we will have to go back out, we will have to file another...
Yes.
Complaint and go through that entire process again.
Yeah, that's correct. I think it's also worth noting that this particular proposal came in under the cluster zoning bylaw, but there are other options there. There are ways to build either under a conventional subdivision or as of right, I suppose, too. So, I mean, this is not the only building option on the property, it just happens to be what this experienced developer presented.
Right.
There are other ways to develop that property, some of which could end up with more houses or fewer houses, depending on the approach of the successful bid of...
Correct, yep. Yeah, the attractiveness of the cluster was it maintains some open space in the character of the, of the land, and that was part of the RFP process, and it was, to the extent possible, to maintain the character, the unique character of the property. And to a degree, the cluster development gives you a chance to do that.
That's part of it, a lot of thought went into, as you know. I mean, before this ever got to the stage with the RFP going on, a lot of people spent a lot of good time working on it to reach the result you just described. What can we do to try to preserve the land to the best of our ability and still satisfy the Attorney General?
Right.
This process started quite a while ago. The Attorney General was really anxious for the town to get moving, if you will, because, yes, we have the Governor Stoughton fund, as you know, and it does a lot of good, but here's this big parcel of land and he has a fund. Well, you either need to build something on it, sell it and allow something to be built on it, or have some development, you know, have more money available for the benefit of the poor than is just the decent sum, but not a lot, that is dwindling slowly as you help our people in need. By the way, I will mention as an aside, you'd be amazed at how many people express surprise that there's even a need for a fund for the poor in Milton. There seems to be this, not necessarily Milton people, but other people, they, they're surprised to find out that there are people in Milton that have financial needs. Well, as you know, it's trustees.
Like every other town, certainly are.
Quite a bit. But you're right, once we've reached this far, if God forbid it were not to go forward, the Attorney General would be watching this with a jeweler's eye, because this is on their radar screen, here's a gift of over 30 acres of land to the town, what are you doing with the folks, you know, how are you benefiting the poor? As you probably remember from the historical thing, at one time it was a woodlot and they had a, 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 a farmhouse for sick people there. So they, in the ancient days, they were doing it...
It was used, yeah.
And had the farm being developed and housed poor people. Well, as society evolved, it changed, but it still doesn't eliminate the need to utilize the property to the best of our ability to help out people. So, but I mean, it's really on their radar screen.
Do you have a comment, sir?
I wasn't even going to say anything on this topic tonight, I'll just let you and John handle it, but I, there are, there is something that's worth mentioning, and one of the pieces that delayed the due diligence period was the Native American research, the claim of the burial ground, that took an awfully long time. We had to spend some money out of the trust to get an expert out there to weigh in on that issue, but the building commissioner issued his letter back in December when Polte filed their plan, it was John or Tom who just read it, you know, saying, "I do not agree that the plan complies with Part 10D, moving to the 100-foot buffer." The building commissioner's position was clear on this, and he has spoken for the town. Because Polte had a different view, there were some, there was an effort by the trustees to try to see if there could be a way to come to a resolution on this. And I do think that we should thank Tom for his efforts in the last, I don't know, was it three or four months, Tom, to meet with the neighbors, especially the immediate abutters, who were the ones most affected. There are, there are members, you know, there are neighbors of the Indian Cliff Neighborhood Association who are not immediate abutters to this site. You tried to have a smaller group meeting with the countryside lane residents and people who would really be directly impacted.
Right.
You know, I'll say it again, it's easy for people to throw rocks and to throw stones and say that, we've heard complaints that there's a big conspiracy here that we're trying to undermine, we're doing all this in executive session. That's not the case. I, the, the building commissioner's letter was issued eight months ago. There's been an effort by the trustees to try to come to a resolution and see if an agreement among the abutters, the developer, could be worked out. So, Tom, I do think we should thank you for trying to undertake that effort, even if only a couple of the abutters met with you, it was still worth, worth it, I think, to go through that process, to try to bring the parties together, the abutters, the developer, and see what potentially could be done to, to, to try to resolve that. You know, one of the great benefits that Tom brings to this board is creative thinking and thinking outside the box. And whether people think that the solution was good or not, Tom's motivation in trying to meet with the abutters was motivated in an effort to try to come to a resolution here and to try to do the right thing. So I do think that's worth saying, that we're going forward now, this is going to the planning board, hopefully there'll be a resolution, there will be a public hearing process. Abutters and neighbors can get up and bring the issues that they'd like to the planning board's attention, but I guess we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at right now. David, have you anything else to weigh in on, or?
No, no, I think, appreciate the update, John.
Thank you, John, for all of your work on this.
Thank you.
And Bill.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, close the...
Adjourn.
Yeah, adjourn the Governor Stoughton, trustees Governor Stoughton Fund meeting and enter into executive session.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now I will propose a motion, now we're back in open session for the Board of Selectmen, I'll propose a motion to enter into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and also consider the purchase, exchange, taking lease or value of real property zero central, and believe in that having such discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the bond and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Charlie, yes, we are in executive session.